...are present. Citizens and council in a minute, I'm going to ask you to stand. We'll be led in an invocation this evening by Councilmember Jim Perro and then be led in pledges to the U.S. flag followed by pledge to the Texas flag where Councilmember Schaffner will lead us. Will you please stand?
Almighty God, Heavenly Father, we thank you for the opportunity we have to come together tonight to discuss the business of this beautiful community. We thank you for the many blessings of life, for the day itself and everything therein. We thank you for all those who serve this community, be they firefighters, police officers, or staff members or council members. We're all after one purpose, and that is to get the best things done in the best possible way for the benefit of all the residents. Guide us, direct us, and help us to make the proper decisions that all the citizens might benefit from those decisions. We ask all this in Jesus' name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
You may be seated. Thank you. Citizens' presentations, this is an opportunity for citizens to address the council on any matter whether or not it is posted on the agenda. The council is not permitted to take action on or discuss any presentations made to the council at this time concerning an item not listed on the agenda. The council will hear presentations on specific agenda items prior to the council addressing those items. You may speak up to four minutes or a time limit determined by the mayor or presiding officer. To speak during this item, you must complete the speaker's form that includes the topics of your statement. Topics of presentation should be limited to matters over which the council has authority. Holly, do we have anybody that signed up for presentations?
No, sir.
All right, hearing none. We will go to consent agenda. All matters listed on the consent agenda are considered to be routine by the town council and will be enacted by one motion. There will not be a separate discussion of these items. If discussion is needed, is desired, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and will be considered separately. Counsel, does anyone wish to remove either item six or seven? Hearing none, I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve consent agenda items six and seven. Second.
Mayor Protem Lamont moved, and who seconded?
Second.
And Philip Schaffner seconded. So we are then voting to approve the consent agenda item six, consider and take appropriate action regarding the minutes dated March 24th, 2015, and item seven, consider and take appropriate action regarding designating Assistant Town Manager/ CFO Stephen Glickman to serve as Acting Town Manager in compliance with Section 4.06 of the Trophy Club Town Charter. All in favor of the motion to approve consent, please show your hands. All opposed, same sign. No opposed, it is unanimous. Counsel, call your attention to item eight, recognition of the 2014 Citizen of the Year nominees and announce the recipients and discussion of same. Citizens, I welcome you this evening. We've got a good crowd. I appreciate everyone coming. Is there a member of past recipients who wish to make any comment prior to me reading the nominees? Anyone here that made the recommendations? No? All right. So when I read your name and a little about you, I want you to stand, and after I've read everyone's name, then I'll announce who wins, and we'll deal with the adult Citizen of the Year first. And we have, we'll take a picture of all of you, and we have some gifts for you. The first item is Matt Tibbetts. And did I say that correctly, Mr. Tibbetts?
Yes, sir.
He's been a resident for over nine years. He served Trophy Club and the surrounding community by holding various positions on the Board of Directors of volunteer organizations, Greater Northwest Soccer Association. Currently, he serves as President of the organization and has put in countless volunteer hours working to ensure that the program benefits the Trophy Club residents and surrounding cities. His efforts have improved the organization as a whole, including the fields of play for the players and making sure that anyone interested in soccer is able to play, whether they can afford it or not. Without Matt's leadership, the organization would be unable to provide scholarships to those in need and assist players with great foundation for the love of the game and teamwork. Trophy Club youth soccer players are benefactors of his hard work and get to take advantage of having organized soccer due to his hard work and diligence. Matt pays attention to the details and attends countless meetings with other associations, schools, and groups, all to further the cause of soccer in our community. He is trying to continue the tradition of developing spectacular soccer players from the area by working with coaches at all level to help him train his association volunteers and to help make them successful. Matt continues to go out of his way to meet the needs of the players, parents, and coaches. Matt, thank you for your service. The next person who was nominated is Lizette Cortez, or Cortis? Cortez. And did I say Lizette right? Well, I got half of it right. All right, Cortez. Lizette has been a resident for two and a half years. Mrs. Cortez has led the Soccer Booster Club as President and has given to area needs through time donations and material items. She maintains a kind, gentle spirit, yet cheerleads for those who need a boost or fanfare for accomplishments. Lizette has assisted special needs students with reading materials at Byron Nelson High School. Ms. Cortez treats people with dignity and respect and always encourages students to go the extra mile. She laughs with them through the tough times and celebrates when new milestones are met. Mrs. Cortez is known by many of you, many of you who never hear a negative word about her. Mrs. Cortez has had struggles of her own this past year, including the loss of her mother, and all while finding special ways to lend a helping hand, give encouragement where needed, and never fails to offer assistance when she saw a need arise. Mrs. Cortez, thank you for your service to our community and sorry for the loss of your... Mindy Bone. Mindy is in the audience. Would you stand, please, Ms. Bone? She's been a resident for almost three years. Mindy is very concerned about the town and the people in it, as well as its future. She donates a lot of her time trying to improve things in town. After visiting the Trophy Club Police Department building, she felt that it was not the best place for our officers to work and has made it her mission to help get a new police department. She donated the money... No, it doesn't say that. I was told I could ad lib. You didn't donate the money? Oh, okay. I'm sorry, couldn't resist. I should have, shouldn't I? She has a great relationship with every member of the town council. Mindy attended a council meeting when school started and didn't leave until every council member joined or said they would join the PTA. In other words, she'll strong-arm you. No, I'm sorry. Mindy attended another council meeting and helped a citizen of Trophy Club get an ordinance change to allow for a snow cone stand in Trophy Club. She didn't have to do this. She willingly gave up her time to help a resident. She is also very involved with Beck Elementary regarding safety issues with children and even helped jumpstart a community-wide discussion about crosswalk safety, which subsequently helped bring about the crosswalk enhancements currently being installed today to help pedestrians and bicyclists safely cross busy roadways in town. Mindy goes out of her way for the citizens of Trophy Club, including when a neighbor had a scheduling conflict and needed someone to pick up her daughter from dance class. Mindy readily volunteered and drove all the way to Grapevine, and when thanked profusely, she said, "That's what we do. We help each other out." Mindy is currently planning Safety Week at Beck Elementary. She is coordinating with the Trophy Club Police Department about their involvement and the planning for assembly for the kids at school, as well as a parent meeting one evening. Instead of Red Ribbon Week, she is calling it Blue Ribbon Week. All right, so Matt and Lizette and Mindy were all our nominees, and tonight, the recommendation of past recipients of the award have given Mindy Bone the honor of receiving Citizen of the Year. So we'll probably get Matt and Lizette and Mindy all come up front, and my partner is here. And Counsel, if you'd like to come around and stand with them, you can, and we'll get a picture of everyone. Yes. All right, so we have these. Okay. So I'll get everybody here, and then I'll hand these out and you get pictures. Now, y'all gonna have to get closer, somehow stand behind or whatever to get this picture. All right, so you ready? So Matt, let me give you this, and if you'll just wait a second, we'll get a picture right there. All right, thank you, Matt. And now Lizette. Here you are. So the camera... Sorry, I was getting that out of her face. Congratulations. Thank you. And Mindy, yours. Wait a minute. No, I'll do the two pictures. Sorry, you ready? Okay, now, we also have Mindy. Let's get that right, so it won't look right to you, but it'll look right to them. Here, that's where you'll see it.
I can't see you.
Everybody in here?
Yep, everybody's in.
And everybody, everybody who wants a picture, get a picture. Okay, so this will be for you. And so you have your choice of red or whatever color hat. Right, what would you like? What is that?
I'll take that.
All right, what do you want?
Well, I tell ya. You want red?
All right. And then everybody gets one of these? So we'll take it. A Trophy Club water bottle. Let's give 'em a round of applause. You may take your seat. All right, once again, I have nominees for the Youth Citizen of the Year, and I have three nominees. I'll state your name, please stand, and then I'll read something about you, then you can be seated, and then announce the recipient of the award at the end. Samantha Ellis. Samantha, are you here tonight? Thank you. She's been a resident for two and a half years. She's an eighth grader at Medlin Middle School and is an exemplary student. She consistently maintains a high A in all her advanced courses. She was awarded a counselor aide position this year due to her excellent citizenship, attendance, and positive role model status. Samantha has been volunteering throughout her enrollment at Medlin Middle School, always eager to give back to her school and community. She has currently earned 173 community service hours this school year. Samantha is diligent about her schoolwork, and she is much deserving of the Gold Status Presidential Award that she will be rewarded with at the end of the school year. When she sees an opportunity, Samantha pursues it. She receives the Medlin Silver Star every six weeks due to her volunteer hours, high grades, and remarkable character. Samantha is well-respected among her peers and teachers. She is willing to help other students with work and/or daily life situations. Samantha's maturity has always stood out. Samantha is an active member of the National Junior Honor Society. She never hesitates to volunteer when needed far before and after school function. She assists with tours, setting up classrooms, question-and-answer sessions for upcoming sixth grade students, et cetera. Samantha Ellis is a remarkable young lady who truly deserves this award due to her leadership, desire to give, and overall. "I would, I want to be a good person and make a difference in this world," Samantha says. Thank you, Samantha. Laura Miley. Laura, are you here? And did I say Miley right? Is that right?
Yes, sir.
All right. Laura's been a resident for three years. What stands out about Laura is the variety of community service that she has done. She did not and does not just focus on one thing. She serves in many capacities. Laura has volunteered for the Trophy Club Women's Club by selling maps during the community garage sales, as well as being a greeter and a server during the Christmas tour of homes. She has volunteered during Vacation Bible School at St. Francis Assisi Church and for one of Roanoke Elementary School's festivals. For the last two years, she has volunteered at the Trophy Club Fire Department Open House and Water Fest. Currently, she volunteers as an actor with the Trophy Club Police Department Explorers. Other volunteer activities include helping the Medlin Middle School Band, Beck Elementary Field Day, and other events at Beck, the Byron Nelson High School Band, and the Technology Student Association Program at Byron Nelson High School. Oh, and let's try to spread this tidbit too far, but Laura is Buster the Bulldog Beck's Massacre. She's covered her face because she didn't want me to say that, I guess. Thank you, Laura, very much. Brandon McCallas? I don't know that I said that right. McCallas. All right, Brandon, thank you. He's been a resident for 14 years. Brandon McCallas is an exceptional student and citizen. Brandon exemplifies outstanding leadership models, appropriate relationship with his peers, teachers, and community, as well as maintaining excellent grades. For the last three years, he has qualified for our top honor of community service by earning presidential status. During this time, he has served over 500 hours in community service. Also, to receive this honor, students must maintain an average of 85 or higher in their classes. He has achieved this accomplishment every six weeks since starting at Medlin in the sixth grade. Over several years, he has made outstanding contribution to Trophy Club's parks and trails. His efforts have also benefited the community storehouse and Roanoke Food Pantry, which is with assistance in need of our community. He also has earned the status of Eagle Scout, which shows his motivation and commitment to serving others. He has served on leadership teams at Medlin and has been a member of the National Junior Honor Society for the last two years. He has also served on Medlin Student Leadership Team who visits with Dr. Rue about educational experiences and opinions related to Medlin. He is admired and respected by his teachers and peers and is always respectful and responsible in his behavior. His teachers comment frequently on how polite and respectful he is in class. He has many friends and is well-liked by his classmates. He is always willing to lend a helping hand in the counseling center when he has tours and to welcome new students. So it is my pleasure tonight to announce that the previous recipients of this award have awarded Brandon McCallas. Counsel, if you want to go down, we'll get a picture. And the three of you want to come up, please? All right, Laura, let's give you a presentation. You get a picture. So you want to shake my hand? Oh, I'm sorry. You're Laura. I went to the wrong place. All right, you're Samantha.
Yes.
All right. Now the deep-hooking pictures over there, look over there. No flashes, but it...
Low light, camera.
Low light. All right, Brandon. And congratulations to you. Over there, y'all okay? Hold that. And then a Citizen of the Year flag. Let's get a picture for that.
Okay.
Wait a minute.
I cannot see.
Wait a minute. Hurry up.
I'm sending...
I can only do that so long. Okay, here we go. One more time. Thirteen more. All right, so ladies first, I'm sorry. Red or green?
Red.
Well, red or red. Congratulations. Let's give 'em a round of applause. And then you each get a water bottle. Thank you very much, and everybody.
Guys, check the website tomorrow. We'll have a recap of tonight with photos congratulating everybody. We're going to send a press release to the paper and hopefully get you guys a little bit of media coverage, and we're just so proud of everybody. Thank you.
So now they can lay their pictures. Yeah, we'll go back to what we're comfortable with. You're off the mistake for the boring part.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And we're going on our work.
Thank you for all you do.
He's working on who? Who, uh?
Shook on parents' hands because they're older.
In fact, speaking of that, I got... No break? No, no break. You're out of order, Montse. I'm always out of order. All right, Counsel, move to item number nine. Consider and take appropriate action regarding a proclamation of the town council declaring May the 7th as Day of Prayer in Trophy Club. The chair will recognize Councilmember Jim Perro to read the proclamation and make a motion. Jim?
Town of Trophy Club, Texas, proclamation number 2015-09, a proclamation of the town council of the Town of Trophy Club, Texas, to recognize May 7, 2015, as the Day of Prayer in Trophy Club, recognizing that 2015 is the 64th consecutive annual observance of the National Day of Prayer and providing an effective date. Whereas, the 64th observance of the National Day of Prayer will be held on Thursday, May 7, 2015, with the theme, "Lord, Hear Our Cry," as inspired by 1 Kings, Chapter 8, verse 28, which says, "Hear the cry and the prayer that your servant is praying in your presence this day." And whereas public prayer and national days of prayer have a long and significant history and American tradition dating back to the first call to prayer in 1775, when the Continental Congress asked the colonies to pray for wisdom in forming a nation. And whereas, in 1952, the Congress of the United States, by a joint resolution, enacted legislation setting aside an annual Day of Prayer for the nation. And in 1988, this law was amended permanently, setting the day as the first Thursday of every May. And whereas, the National Day of Prayer enables us to recall and teach the way in which our forefathers sought the wisdom of God when faced with critical decisions, thus reaffirming the spiritual principles upon which this nation was founded. And whereas, in these trying and challenging times, when the world is so unsettled, and when many of our brave citizens and members of the military are far from home, making great sacrifices and defending freedom for those abroad and those here at home, we humbly ask God for their protection and pray for peace throughout the world. And whereas, on this day, leaders and citizens across our nation and state will join in united prayer to acknowledge our dependence on God, to give Him thanks for blessings received, to request healing for wounds endured, and to seek His grace, guidance, strength, and protection upon us as a people and a nation. Now therefore, I, Nick Sanders, in conjunction with the town council of the Town of Trophy Club, Texas, by the power vested in me as mayor of Trophy Club, hereby proclaim Thursday, May 7, 2015, as a Day of Prayer in Trophy Club, to coincide with the National Day of Prayer, and that this proclamation shall take effect from and after its date of passage in accordance with law, and it is so proclaimed, passed and approved by the Town Council of the Town of Trophy Club, Texas, this 28th day of April, 2015. Mr. Mayor, I so motion that we approve proclamation number 2015-09.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Councilmember Rowe seconds. All in favor, show your hands. It is unanimous. Thank you for voting. At this time, I'm going to present the proclamation to Ms. Irma Thomas. If you would come forward, Irma. And I'm not sure I have this right, but is this the 23rd year you've done this?
Yes.
Congratulations, 23 years. Prior to the clock tower?
At the clock tower, unless it rains, and we'll move across the street to the Fellowship of United Methodist Church.
Okay, so if you couldn't hear that, come to the ceremony, no matter what, on the 7th, and if it's raining or bad weather, we'll be at the Methodist Church, not at the clock tower, and you'll notice that. And we have mayors from the surrounding cities, and what other dignitaries are coming? Do you have others?
Well, Ted Parker is tied up in Austin, but his administrative assistant will be there, and I'm not sure about Michael Burgess' representative yet.
Okay, so let me come around and give you this proclamation, and thank you for your years of leading. You can stay up there and we'll get a picture. So thank you so much. So here, let's get it. Wait a minute, I gotta turn around. I don't want the blue side. All right, thank you so much. All right, item 10. Consider and take appropriate action regarding a new police and town hall facility and receive presentation from GSBS Principal Tom Beatonhorst and discussion of same. Stephen, were you going to say something first, or are we going directly to Tom?
We could go ahead and have Tom make his presentation, and that will give the council an opportunity to discuss several items and how we can move forward.
All right, Tom, floor is yours.
Well, I feel honored, Mayor. I'm going to apologize in advance on two issues. My voice seems to be going a little bit, so if I falter, I'll try and speak into the microphone. And then the presentation that I hope is right, I sent to Stephen at 4:30. I brought a zip drive to plug in, and they said I couldn't do that because of some past problems you've had. So I don't think we made any edits.
It's new. It's the correct one.
But if we did, I'll point those out. And then I've got a hard copy. And then I've got a hard copy, if you want to pass these around, I've got 12, I'm sorry, April, I think you're 13, so that's a copy.
Lucky.
So let's see if this is what I think it is. Okay, we're starting off good. I'll let those get passed around here first, Mayor. So what, what, I'm showing you, I have hard copy for you, as well as backup on the potential probable budgets, estimates, trying to disclaim that as much as I can.
So while we're passing that out, just for citizens who have not heard, the town council authorized an offer to be made on roughly five and a half acres of land along Trophy Wood Drive. We do have that under contract and expected to close next month. And so we're moving forward in the sense of what are our possibilities for design and space? We did that kind of thing when we were trying to acquire the Methodist Church property and the Beck property, and we are now at least down to the specific site, so we're moving a step further. So, Tom?
Yeah, and I would say, Mayor, we close on Monday, May 4th, so next week.
Monday? What time?
I'm working that out right now.
Oh. Sometime on Monday, we're closing.
Well, that's exciting, to finally have a site that you're, that can work for this project, and I'll show that to you in a minute. So I'm going to spend the first part, and I'm going to take about 10 minutes, unless you interrupt me, and get through this, to show you how a potential building of a 23, 24,000-foot or smaller project can fit on this five-acre site, Stephen? Five acres?
It's 5.56 acres.
Accommodate the parking, accommodate secured parking for the police department, and allow you some future growth for some other uses. And then I'm just going to recap some of the things we've talked about over the last year, and then we're just looking for some feedback and some direction from you, maybe tonight or in the future, okay? Let's see here. So just to point out, so this five-plus acre site is, on the screen is this, on the northern half of this site is the heavily wooded site. The north property line generally abuts the residential neighborhood. The souther, southeasterly part of the site butts the water tower and the new Holiday Inn that's under construction, and wraps around to, Mayor, what's the drive that heads into town there up north?
Trophy Wood Drive and Plaza.
Trophy Wood Drive, across the streets, an existing hotel. There are two potential, I think, restaurant pad sites that are down in both corners of that drive and the frontage road of 114. This site has a grade of about 5%, so it's, it's kind of significant, it's going to take some care in terms of development up there on the top side. As you get down to the adjoining property to the south, the two acres that's left, it diminishes to about a 2% grade. Not insurmountable, but will take some, some design care in terms of putting that site together. So we looked at that five-acre site, trying to do a couple of things. Number one, on the left-hand side, the entry into that parking lot off of the Trophy Club Drive, we were trying to align that with the existing median cut to allow us right-in, right-out, in terms of that access, which we were able to do there. The drive that, that is to the left or the west side of the new Holiday Inn is a mutual access drive, it's private, and that would connect also to the potential parking lot of about 90 or 95 parking spaces. The blue is outlined as a potential building footprint. By no means is this a quote rectangular building. If we move ahead with some design concepts, it will obviously have some undulation for the project to make an attractive building, but it just defines the footprint. We've, we've stayed south of the north property line a significant distance, we have a 40-foot required setback, that's kind of the shaded area up there. And we're probably 100 feet plus, maybe 120 feet south of there to the back of this building, trying to respect that residential neighborhood as well as maintain as many trees that are existing that we can, that abut that north, northern part of the property, as you might recall from that slide. And then to the right of that blue rectangle is what we're proposing as fenced, secured, police department parking, dumpster for refuge, generator, transformer, and those kind of auxiliary functions to the building for this potential project. Potentially moving down the road, we were asked to look at how we might be able to incorporate on the easterly part of this property, some storage of your city's vehicles and maintenance equipment and mulch that you use for landscaping and those kinds of things. And there is a significant part of that site that would work nicely for that, that's kind of secluded, it's in back of the Holiday Inn, it's, it's on the shadow side of the water tower, and then it would provide for access to the easterly drive separating Trophy Club from West Lake.
South Lake.
South Lake, that's right, I'm sorry. And that could all be fenced, so potentially the fenced area that might be required for the police could be expanded. So a couple of concepts that we talked with Stephen and the staff over the last couple of weeks. I wanted to remind you, you may, some of you have not seen this, so last year about this time, we put together a document where we researched the North Texas area in terms of joint town hall, police department projects that had been built in the last three, four, five, six, seven years. And here was a list of about six or seven of those projects, Mesquite, Saxi, Halton City, Melissa, Rockwell, Keller, and North Richland Hills, which is currently under construction. The Tarrant County Sub-Courthouse is not a joint facility, it's a sub courthouse for Tarrant County. And those projects, then, we tried to inflate a just in that third to the left column in last year's dollars. And so what you'll see is a range of about $247 to Saxi's project at $487, I've not seen it, I don't know what it is, so that's kind of an anomaly, if we take that out, we saw a range of about $247 to the low 300s, 320, inflation adjusted for similar types of projects. I've added to it, the top two col, the top two lines are new projects, so the Heber Town Hall and Police Administration is a project that we're doing in our Utah office in Salt Lake City. It's a 25,000-square-foot joint facility, no cells, at $276 a foot, that's construction cost, not land cost, not furniture and fees, so this is construction-related costs for parking, landscaping, and the building. That should start construction later this year, we're finishing the construction drawings on that. And then talked to Rick Riddle, our cost estimating professional that we use on our projects, and he's working on the Carrollton Police Administration expansion. I was actually at the pre-bid on that six months ago, we decided not to pursue that in Carrollton, so I'm a little bit familiar with the project, and right now that's budgeted at $220 a foot, but there's no, no site work involved, it's existing parking, so it's really just the building only, and there's no holding cells in that part of that building. So just history, just to give you some background. I want to remind you where we were in the program, where we left at in the last three to six months. As a joint facility, we have just under 24,000 square feet of space if we were to put these departments together in one building. And so that fits on that site as a single-story, 24,000-square-foot building. I wanted then to revisit when we talked about leaving part of the staff, primarily the development staff, in the, in this building, in the annex, and we had about a little over 19,000 square feet of new building, which encompassed the police, the council chambers, the lobby and public spaces, and then part of the town's town hall functions into a new building, and then left about 3,500 square feet of development services in the annex. You know, this is the tough part, this is, this is, you know, grabbing to some degree, best educated guesses, talking to our peers in the industry and to our cost estimating professionals. We believe that this 20, if you were to build 23,841 square feet, that's the program. At $235 for the building only, we have about a half a million dollars in landscaping, sidewalks, and pavement on that concept we showed you earlier. We do have some challenges with this 5% of grade, and I've just, we've just plugged a number in there for now, just to, just to have a number of 100,000. And then until we see a geotechnical report, I would be remiss not to have some additional costs in there for a suspended slab, which prevents any movement on this building for the next 50 years. We on, we do on occasion have favorable soil conditions here in North Texas where we don't have to do that. And it's something we want to talk seriously to you about once we had a geotechnical report, but that adds about $15 a square foot. So combined, if you take landscaping, pavement, the site situation, the town hall at $235, and a suspended slab, you're about $275 a foot. To that, we add fees, testing, surveying, pre-con services, furnishings, new furniture, the other things you see on the, on the tablet here, and we think we're at about, just short of $8 million. That would be my best guess and advice to you today. We then looked at what if we did what was proposed, again, as an option three or four months ago, and we left part of that, those city functions, city functions in the annex, and applied about a $50 square foot cost to do renovation of that 3,500 square feet, reduce the parking, because we don't need as much parking now, thus the change from 500 to 400,000 dollars. The suspended slab reduces because we have less square footage, and that price is about $6.9 million, that's what I would tell you today. There was some discussion with Stephen and staff last month regarding a delivery process in terms of this potential project. Whether you do a design, hard bid, and build, or whether you do a construction manager-at-risk delivery system, I don't care. I can tell you, though, that we, we see many projects in North Texas that are being delivered construction manager-at-risk, and I believe that the 10 or 12 municipal projects that we've done in the last seven or eight years have all been construction management-at-risk. And I think there's a combination of reasons, which I've listed. This a, a construction manager-at-risk allows you to engage a construction company during the design process and help with those VE, which we call value engineering, studies and options to get the best value for your money during the design process. We think we're pretty good as designers, and we've got good other professionals helping us, but again, that installation and that on-the-ground construction set of eyes helps improve that process. The other thing that we found to be beneficial is, 100% of the time in all the projects we've worked on, any savings that is garnered through the bidding process is returned to the client, returned to you. In a hard bid situation, the contractor keeps that. So these are just some highlights, this is not anything you have to decide today. If the project moves forward, if money is funded, then you need to make a decision as to how you want to deliver this project, because if we do it construction management-at-risk, we want that team on board early in the design process, okay? Some of you have construction backgrounds, and I'm sure you have opinions one way or the other and can lend an ear and a voice to what we're, to my opinions, but again, it's not critical, I think, for the next couple of months regardless. I just wanted to throw something out, you know, we're talking maybe potentially of a November ballot, maybe, if you intend to do that. I would suggest that if that's the intent, and you have to call a vote sometime the end of July, 1st of August, that you want to have enough information in front of the council and the citizens to make a wise decision in terms of the project. And we believe that includes more study on the site, coming out, coming up with a real floor plan that works for the departments, and a style of architecture that you like and fits whatever budget you establish within reason. And that needs to be done over the next three to three and a half months in order to meet, I think, your date to call, call a vote, and then to support you graphically in town hall meetings or whatever you want us to do to present information. So this is just an idea, if you want to move forward. So that's my presentation, I can answer any questions you have, and I think Stephen would agree, we're just looking at direction, whether it's tonight or in the future, trying to give you enough information to make a decision.
So the second document you handed out, which wasn't your presentation, is just the detail of the financial?
It included the detail of this sheet.
You summarized back there.
So it included where these 10 items, what added up to that. It was hard to read on the screen.
All right, thank you. All right, so I'll let council ask questions, and then we'll discuss, so let's respect Tom's time and ask questions. Mayor Protem Lamont.
Couple of things, on, oh, you got no page numbers again, just the same.
I did that on purpose to see if you catch me, Greg.
The LEED, like, less than 50% of the examples you gave have LEED certified. The prices that you have, are they LEED certified, or?
You're not going to get a LEED certified building for these, this, these budget numbers. We will give you the most energy-efficient building that those dollars will allow.
Garrett?
Couple of questions, Tom. One, I will say this to the council, I have a friend of mine, I won't mention who it is, but he's actually worked with you on some projects, and I told him we were doing a city hall, and he's, he actually mentioned you by name before I even said who we were working with, and so you do come highly recommended. So, second question, that's not a question, that's a statement. The Heber example that you have on here, do you know that project well enough to explain to us what we have different than what they have that's causing the estimated price to be so different? The reason I say that is, I'm real comfortable around that $6.9 million number, we're missing that by about a million, so I've got a follow-up right after that, but how do we get to that 6.9? What are they doing in Heber?
Well, actually, at $276 a foot, that's what I'm saying your building is.
Okay, so you're saying it's all the...
And you're adding fees, furniture, IT.
Okay. In, in the number that you've given us, when I was having this conversation, we have in our plans, or we've specked, this room, I don't know what you call it, it's a safe room or some sort of a hardened...
EOC.
EOC, is that what it's called? Is that in these numbers here?
I believe it is. I think there are a couple of things, I'm glad you brought that up, Garrett. We have this training room that's primarily for police staff, although it could be used by anybody in that building, because it's a joint facility, but it's on the police side. So it's a training room to get their staff in, about 30 or 35 people. It is what we're calling a hardened room, so it, it can withstand some degree of wind and, and storm, okay? And that needs to be determined, what hardness we want on that. But I think, and we were talking about this earlier with Stephen, I think there's somewhere also for, for public buildings where you're obligated to have a hardened room for the employees. room for the employees, okay? So that would serve for that as well, so yes.
Okay.
So hardened walls and ceiling and how we bring the utilities into that.
Okay, and the reason I asked that question is, in this conversation now with this architect, he had mentioned that those particular types of facilities, and I think he went one step further and talked about the backup generator, the redundant power, all the things that go in there. For a room that's around eight-hundred square feet, which is I think what we proposed...
Sounds right.
Could be upwards of half a million dollars for that particular eight-hundred square foot facility, is that?
I disagree.
Okay, you do disagree. So tell me, what is, how much of that, how much of this one-point-seven million dollars, is it, I guess half a million dollars of it is not that room, but is it two-hundred-thousand?
I, I can give back to you on that.
I know you spit on, okay.
Okay, so, so we've got that hardened room, we have, we have two police holding cells. They're not for overnight, they are for to bring-ins.
Holding cells, right.
They're a holding cell, they're hardened, they're concrete walls, okay? So we've got those two rooms.
The evidence rooms.
And, and the evidence.
And the armory.
And typically what we do with evidence rooms anymore, we're doing steel suds construction like, like that wall, sheetrock, but in back of the sheetrock, we're doing a wire mesh in back of it, so it's not a CMU wall, doing that on the ceiling and the walls. So that's a pretty economical way to approach those evidence areas, okay? And then we just have to talk about what's the budget bear in terms of the utilities. We, we are going to have a backup generator. It probably won't support a hundred percent of the building electrical functions, and we'll have to decide if the project moves forward, what, what are the most critical parts of that building, that room being one of them, and probably some other parts of the building in terms of lighting and cooling and so on.
And, and the pur, the purpose for my questioning, I'm sure you know where I'm going, is I want this to pass. This is a facility that we need, but I want to respect the taxpayers' dollars. And I think there's a threshold that if we go over that, they're going to start to say, is this excessive? Do we really need this? And, and it's my personal belief that that number is somewhere below seven million dollars. I might be wrong, but I guess, I don't know, value engineering is the right word, you hear that a lot in construction. Well, what does a value engineer make it work? So I, I think we should have a conversation about that. Is it that this is where we are? Is this kind of, in terms of finish out, is this on the medium, high-end scale? Do we need to go back if we really believe that seven million dollars is the number and shrink the facility? Do we need to talk about the annex building being used again? I think these are questions we need to talk about because we need to make sure that we can present the voters with something that they can say, I'm on board with this. And I think if we start creeping up in that eight, nine million dollar number, I know as a voter, I'm not okay with that, so I'm guessing a lot of other people are going to be the same way. That's just some general thoughts I had.
So I have a question about the hardened room. Is, if we just built that for employee protection, which you're saying is required, what size would that need to encompass?
You know, in a lot of buildings, it, it ends up being the men's and women's toilet rooms.
Can we verify that requirement? Because we talked for half an hour about hardened rooms last summer and the merits, and that didn't come up. So I just want to make sure that that is required, because I know I certainly never spend any time in a hardened room. And I've lived in Texas for thirty-five of thirty-five years and have been subject to tornadoes that whole time.
What about a padded room?
I'm sorry.
Sometimes.
Rylan, I think prior to your election, I thought the prior council discussed that that was not a requirement.
Okay.
But I could, could be wrong.
But, but even, even so, a men's and women's restroom is totally different than a meeting room, so, which, which probably we would need those cost numbers.
Here, here is the reason why you have that, is there is no, you want a place where you can run your operations out of in the event of a disaster where the building is hit or the area is damaged, you have a place that stays operational. So because you, you're going to have to work out of something, at least on a temporary basis, until things come back to order.
But, but don't you think our neighbors would help us? I mean, we, we preach and we, we lament mutual aid. I would think Roanoke, Westlake, Southlake would be more than accommodating to us as, as I hope we would be to them.
All right, so I, I think the point is that we want to verify what requirement is there, Stephen, if you'll make a note of that so that we totally understand that. Chief?
Yes, sir, I just wanted to say that they most probably would, but if they're out too. But this would allow us to maintain all functions within the town coordinated in one building, one room, and operational. So we're communicating with each other and them, because it may be just the opposite. We may be helping them more so, but, but it allows us, so it's not just a training room, or it, it's actually a truly EOC, which we don't have today. So the room would open up, there'd be workstations for each department, everybody in the same place at the same time coordinating.
So I think that brings up the second question that I think was asked by Garrett. Stephen is, try to get from the architects or from other buildings, what is the estimated delta cost to deal with that, so we understand better what we're asking ourselves to do? I have a question about the geotech report.
Yes, sir.
Given the fact that that has some bearing on cost of construction, right? Does that include the issue that is somewhat related to the change in elevation, or is that a total different subject?
No, it's, it's totally different.
And so in the cost related to maybe elevation changes, is there a better way to estimate? Are we talking about retaining walls, grading cost, some way to estimate what that maybe is doing to the cost of our building compared to what, well, I guess if we were looking at the Methodist land, there was at least that much, if not more, wasn't there?
I, I think it was probably more severe there, the way that lane's like.
Probably about the same, so maybe I don't need to understand that better, but that's kind of where I was headed, I guess I changed my mind in the middle.
If, if we moved into, at some point in time, into concept design and some estimating by quantities instead of square footage, then we would, we'd have an opportunity to address that.
So the geotech study only relates to the fact that you've included an additional three-hundred-and-fifty-seven thousand dollars for suspended slab?
For the slab, to assure that it's not moving. And again, there's, there's the...
May do that no matter what geotech shows?
No, we'll wait for that report.
Okay, all right.
That's the worst case, and, and maybe it goes away and it's not needed.
Is that something that can be done interim? And how much might that geotech report cost?
You can do that, it's going to cost about five thousand dollars, and you need it done sometime anyway, so.
Yep, what my plan was is, once we close on the property, to engage, you know, there's several like alpha testing or somebody else to go out there, do the geotech, it takes a couple of weeks to get that report back, and then you have an idea of what you're looking at.
It's money well worth spending and you have to do it anyway.
Okay, good, all right. So I think Lamont had his hand up, I don't know if anybody else did.
Can you educate me on suspended slab? Because you'd mentioned you really didn't need it, but it's three-hundred-and-fifty-seven thousand.
You know, we, we recommend that this type of building's a fifty-year building. And municipal facilities, schoolwork in, in the ISD, school market in this part of the world, most of those projects are elevated off of the ground surface to allow that ground, which is a clay material, to expand and contract and not impact that slab. And the slab is then held with the piers that are drilled down to rock or to some strata of soil elevation that is not moving. So it's a very stable slab, it's not, it doesn't move. If this was a private, if this was the retail center, or by the grocery store, you, they, they would not do this. A developer would not do this unless you were in Los Colinas. You could do other things to the ground surface with modification of that soil that would probably limit that potential movement to less than one inch. And in the development world, in the private market, that would be acceptable, and in most cases is not going to be a problem, except in Los Colinas. But for a building that you're going to own and not flip over to some other buyer, you want to be very careful that what you're building is going to be very stable for the next fifty years.
We're very early in this process, so, you know, I, I know it's high level, so I just want to ask this question, because I've built quite a few things myself, and I've had these kind of heart-to-heart talks with my builders and say, you know, the number that we want, six-point-nine, I'd, I'd like honestly, is that attainable? Or are we, you know, are we going to be going back and forth with Stephen and reality is that we can't hit that? Or is it something that, that is attainable, you know, to build something of this size?
Well, based on history of similar facilities in this, in this area, twenty-four thousand's not going to be attainable.
That's, that's what I, that's what I wanted to know.
Six-point-nine.
At six-point, I'd rather have reality than, okay, thank you.
All right, so council, this is our only place on the agenda to make any decisions with this topic tonight. Not even in executive session we'll be discussing this matter. So there are a couple of things that have kind of been thrown out to make decisions or talk about, and I'll bring those up, but, but I think I had two hands. I think, Philip, were you, oh, you were pointing to Garrett, okay. Garrett and then Rylan, okay.
I've got a question, Tom, about the slab. So I've built a couple retail buildings in the, in the DFW area. So is it different, one of the requirements we see really a hundred percent of the time when it comes to the slab is, we have to remove the existing soil and we have to ship in new soil. And typically it comes from these pits that are up and up home.
There's a couple of ways to do it.
Is, is that, so I guess this is my question. We, we, because of the soil and that creates the, the non-movement, is that not the same? It sounds to me like you're saying this is a different process. So what, the process that we're doing, that isn't...
That, that modification that you've talked about, and there's a couple of modifications you can make that can get the, get the potential movement down to less than an inch.
Okay.
Which is kind of the maximum benchmark.
Okay.
For projects. And that could be, there's three or four different things. You could take this whole twenty-four thousand foot pad site of this blue area, and you, you dig it out five, ten feet deep.
Right.
And you put it back in eight-inch lifts with water, fire hose water, to get the right moisture content. So what you're doing is you're swelling that clay and putting it back in the hole, and then you're putting your slab on top of it. The theory being that the clay's now saturated and it's wet to a, it's maximum expansion, and with the slab on top of it, it's not going to dry out. Now, is that the case over fifty years? I don't know, okay? But we do that a lot. On very large projects, you'll see big, big warehouses where they'll have the caterpillar out there and they're, they've got those rods and they're squirting water down into the ground. So they don't take it out, but they, they put water down into the soil. For a small project, that's kind of, it's not cost feasible. So that expands the soil, so that's a second way to do it. A third way is you haul it, you take the sum of the soil out per the report and you bring in that good soil that's out in Bridgeport or wherever it is, okay? And so those are options, but until we see a geotechnical report, I don't know.
But I guess my question is, that isn't the same as what you're proposing here?
It's not the same, we're talking about a void.
You're talking about just putting piers down into the bedrock.
Under the slab where that, you could crawl, you can't crawl it because we're only going to have six or eight or ten inches of area underneath that slab that is actually a void. It, it's a, it's a, it's a car, it's a cardboard carton form that's put on the ground, that you pour that slab on, and then that, that carton form deteriorates over time with moisture. It's stable enough to pour the concrete, to have the concrete cure and set up and gain its strength, and then the, the void box actually crushes when the soil raises, but it doesn't move the slab then. And then you have this void there.
Okay.
That's the suspended slab. So there's three or four different ways, geotechnical will tell us. Probably out of ten jobs I would do, one might not be a suspended slab for a city hall in the area.
Okay, Rylan?
I just want to say if we have an option relative to what you guys were just discussing, if there's an option on the table that offers a worst-case scenario movement of under one inch, that, that's going to be where I'm headed. I'm, I'm looking at cost here, and along those same lines, I'm going to require a lot of convincing to support hardened room. That's all I've got.
Well, again, again, we can look at that as alternate costs.
So I think, couple of items that I would comment upon. I think that money spent upfront to make sure foundation stays where it should is well-spent for fifty years. I, I would hate to say that I'm going to take a method that later I'll regret, so I, I personally think the money should go there. Secondly, I'm not sure that the citizens will not go above six-point-nine or seven million. I think it depends on what you show them you're going to do and the due diligence that we've done for space. And in any of that, you're going to ask them to approve a dollar amount for everything, and you've seen some of those estimates of equipment and furnishings and those kind of things in here. And you don't want to cut yourself short on a bond election, recognizing that you're not going to go back and ask for more money. So if you have a plan that says it's whatever seven million plus is, if you don't spend it, you repurpose it at, at the end of that, but you don't want to find yourself where all of a sudden we can't build the building because we didn't pass a bond election for that, and you're really not going to know that cost till you get some engineering done and get some bids. You're going to have estimates until that time, and, and I think we're all familiar with that. I would say that whether it's construction manager-at-risk or the contracting with someone who is there daily as a project manager, I think it's hugely important. Now, I don't, these aren't the same, but they're somewhat similar, and I guess I would like your comments as, assuming you went construction manager-at-risk, would you still consider the fact that the town should either contract or have someone on their staff who in fact is the project manager who is there every day?
Whether you do a design bid, hard bid, or you did a construction management-at-risk, those, both of those scenarios, both of those firms provide daily onsite, hundred percent monitoring of the project. In fact, there may be a couple of staff members onsite. Give an example on Tarrant County's courthouse, bigger project, thirteen million dollars, I think there were four full-time people on that job. We had a safety manager, you had a general...
All that worked for the contractor?
For the contractor, okay? So on this job, you, you'd have at least one, you may have two, you may have one and a half all the time on the site. You're going to have a contract manager that's in the, the contractor's office, that's going to be supporting the project, and this size of project, he's going to be running a couple of projects, so he's been, he's going to be giving you thirty to fifty percent of his time, okay? That's the guy usually getting us the shop drawings and the submittals and buying out the project in terms of subcontract. On your end, you need one designated representative, it's not a full-time position, you, you need to have somebody available to be at the weekly meetings that are a couple hours, and to be at any other special meetings.
All right, so I don't know who was first, who?
Greg's first.
Greg first, and then Jim.
Why do we have furnishings and furniture and, I mean, it's a thirty-year bond, the furniture's not going to last thirty years. Why don't we pull that out? I mean, that's a...
Ken.
I just don't think that's a reasonable item to be in six-point-nine.
Want to make sure it's accounted for, Greg.
All right, reasonable point, so council...
The same, excuse me, the same might be said for IT and for cabling and, you know, so there are some other costs that you just need to look at and decide how you want to fund, that surely don't have to, as you said, be in a thirty-year mortgage.
So council, do you want to make some of that decision tonight, or would you prefer to, at another meeting, deal with that topic before we deal with what the bond election is for?
I, I think we should at least give them some direction as far as what to pull out.
Well, it's, it's not going to affect what he's going to do next.
Okay.
In my opinion. It's going to affect what you decide is the cost.
But that, but that does affect him in a sense, if we pull out a half a million, and then he's got to get down another half a million.
No. No, it affects what you call the bond election for. Okay? And he's not providing IT services. He's not providing moving, and he's not providing AV equipment necessarily or furnishings. That's not an engineering thing necessarily of what he's doing. Now, he may design how AV works, but at the end of the day, those are all items that could be pulled if you were trying to get the price down and therefore look better from a bond election. But at the end of the day, you're still going to have to pay for them.
No, I understand it, but just not in the bond.
Okay.
I think we should look at pulling it out.
Tax note or something.
So, so we can deal with that, I think, as a topic at some point.
Yes.
To deal with. Okay, Jim?
Tom, I was just curious. We talked about the EOCs, and you presented eleven other communities that you are involved with. And I'm just wondering how many out of that eleven grouping elected for an EOC versus selected not to install an EOC hardened room?
Jim, I'd have to check on that, but I can get back to Stephen with that.
All right, that's the third item then to get. And I, and, and maybe it's more flexible than EOC from my interpretation. It is a somewhat hardened facility. They may not call it EOC, but, but let's recognize what it really is.
There's a considerable difference in cost, and I'm just curious how these other groups looked at it before they went forward.
Okay. Garrett, did you raise your hand?
Yeah, I did. I have a question for Stephen. Is, I remember in a conversation we had, and I'll try to lead you down this, you complete my sentence if you can. Is it CCPD that had some money to contribute towards this?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Maybe something constructive to do is to say, this is what they're going to be able to contribute. And maybe we take some of these police matters, and I don't remember how much that is. But is it bondable, a million and a half bucks worth of stuff? Is it seven hundred thousand dollars worth of stuff? Maybe as we, I think Greg made a great point, a good point, Greg.
As usual.
First time for everything.
Yeah. That was for you, Phillip. Maybe we say, okay, furniture is this, you pull that out, CCPD has this. And then we can really start to paint the picture for the citizens that this is actually how much.
Yeah. We can, we can do that. One thing to keep in mind, you know, one of the things I heard Councilmember Rowe mention is like a tax incentive or something. Anytime you issue debt, you're paying issuance cost. And it, you know, it ranges probably anywhere from fifteen to twenty-five thousand dollars, you know. But, yeah, I would say twenty thousand minimum. So, every time you issue this piece or this piece or this piece, you're paying those costs. And so, I just, I'm not saying one's right or wrong. I just want you to be aware that every time you do do that, there are those costs associated with issuing debt.
All right. So, I, uh, I don't know that we have any other questions. Tom, we appreciate you doing that. I guess the only thing else I would now say is, what is our next step after we close? And how long before we would, you would be ready for that next step?
Well, if, if I were to make a recommendation, I would like to be more confident about the layout of this building, the materials to construct this building, and the appearance of this building to bring back to you and, and some follow-ups to get your input. And then to be able to take that plan and take a couple of weeks and run the numbers on it and see where we're at. And we can do that this summer.
Okay. And so, is that something practically done as, with this entire body of seven?
I think it is.
Okay, good. So, Stephen, I think you have several items for you to come back on us for. The only thing that I guess that, that maybe was brought up tonight, and I'll just see if you want to talk about it tonight or not. And that is, have you changed your mind about allowing this to be a twenty-three thousand-plus square build, square foot building and having the annexed citizens, workers occupy that space? Are you still at that point? Because when he designs and he starts working, he needs to understand that if we change our mind later, that probably hurts us. So.
My opinion would be, we go with the full, get everybody out of this building. I think, if for no other reason, just based upon tonight, I think the mud's going to give us problems. And we don't want to get locked out of a, a space we don't have enough room to move somebody else out.
All right, anybody else want to comment? I'm with Greg. I think we plan for it personally. I think it's the right thing to do at the roughly twenty-three thousand. And what the price is going to be is what the price is going to be from my standpoint. And I'll deal with that appropriately when we go that way.
I would agree with you, Mr. Mayor, because when we first talked about using that four thousand square feet, it was under the understanding we would be operating out of the Methodist property next door. And so, the, the units could function quickly and, and normally because of the close proximity of that annexed building to the proposed town hall. But now, since we're looking at a whole new site, that functionality has been taken away. So, I would like to put the whole thing together on one site on Trophywood Drive.
So, I think Ryland and Garrett and then Phillip.
Yeah, it's, I think we would be remiss not to plan for the full staff, all services being in a new facility. That just is not, it would be poor planning to do anything other than that. However, that being said, taking that approach, which is the proper approach, be prepared for a much more uncomfortable process of arriving at a final number than we would otherwise. Because cost is still going to be paramount, but I, I agree with that approach.
All right, Garrett and then Phillip.
I support the approach as well. I think that, I like the idea of having the community center here and finding a way to make that happen. I, I think that, you know, we need Tom to bring us back some materials so we can actually start to, to better hone in how much it's going to cost. But I think we plan on being over there. And, you know, it's going to be an uncomfortable conversation, but let's talk about what CCPD can bring to the table. Let's, let's talk to the citizens about the savings of almost a million dollars in land cost. And let's talk about how we, you know, how we arrive to an affordable building. But I do support everybody being on one place.
Phillip?
I agree as well. I, I disagree with Greg. I, I don't think that the mud is going to be a problem if, if we use that as a community center. I think it's going to be tougher for them to be a problem if that is utilized for the citizens as a community center rather than staff. And so, I, I don't disagree that we should put all of our staff in one building. I, I don't want to use that as an excuse to then say whatever it costs. You know, I, I agree with Garrett and Ryland. We, we, we still have to sharpen our pencils, and we still have to be as frugal as possible when we present this bond.
Tim, did you want to say anything?
I, I think we're.
I think we're all pretty fiscally conservative when it comes to this building, and I think the architect understands that. You know, from my point of view, we want the police station part of it to be top-notch. And, you know, the, the town offices should be nice, but they don't have to be the Taj Mahal. You know, they should be adequate, and we should be proud of it. But we should be definitely as frugal as possible.
All right, Jim, you're the last comment.
Tom, I just had one other question since you brought up the materials and concepts. From a realistic standpoint, how soon could you have that ready to bring to us? So, we have a kind of a target date?
I think if you gave us a month, we could come back with some ideas. Okay, and then get some input, and then take another two or four weeks and tweak it based on your comments and come back. And you'll maybe every month see you until you're ready to have the confidence to call a bond or not.
We can't have a meeting only once every thirty days, or we won't call the bond.
Yeah, you, you have until August eleventh.
Yeah.
I, I think I would need thirty days once you release us to get to the first meeting. And then we could probably get back every couple of weeks, okay?
All right, good.
Mayor, I, I, and council members, at the end of the day, the building will cost what it costs. What, what we will help you do is to find the best way to give you the best value within reasonable terms of this being a municipal facility. We understand this is not going to be, what did I show you, Melissa, four hundred and fifty dollars? I haven't seen their project, but it's not going to be that. On the other hand, it's going to be a project you'll be proud of, and it, it's going to be weather tight, and it's going to have systems that will take normal commercial maintenance. You know, that would be our goal.
All right, so I'm going to deal with one final thing that deals with financial matter. Counsel, call your attention to the front page of the large handout under section three, professional services. Item B under three, architect engineering services, eight percent of construction. Tom, I assume that's your fees?
Well, it's my fees, my engineers, yes, sir.
All right. And so, up until this time, you have been billing us for services, is that correct?
That is correct.
And that agreement, Stephen, how is that agreement? Where are the funds coming from? Is there an upper limit? Can I expound on that if you would?
Yeah, I have to go back and check. I think the upper limit was three hundred and twenty thousand. But that included some lead certification dollars. It's being currently paid for out of a twenty-twelve tax note. We have approximately two hundred and seventy thousand dollars off the top of my head available.
Remaining?
Yes, sir.
All right. All right. I, I just wanted to clearly let counsel understand that aspect of it.
Yeah, and what you're going to want to do is within, is it ninety days prior to an election that you can do a reimbursement resolution? Is that correct? Yeah. I know within a certain amount of time, you can do a reimbursement resolution. So, any funds that, anything that we would incur in terms of cost leading up to a thing, we, we can be reimbursed for those by the bond.
All right. So, if you would add that to a work item.
Yes, sir.
To find out exactly what we're talking about time-wise there. I think what Stephen's saying, that could be part of the bond election, recognizing that's going to affect your costs, but you're going to repay where you took money from. And so, anybody else have a question of Tom before we move forward? Tom, we, we appreciate you coming tonight. I'm going to give an opportunity, if a citizen wants to speak, that they can briefly about the item. We always give that opportunity. Tom, thank you for pulling this together for us and for coming tonight.
Mayor, thanks, thanks for having me.
Could I ask one?
And having to wait for all the other things that we did. Stephen?
I, I know I heard each person's comments regarding the building. Can we, would, would the council consider taking some action regarding the twenty-three thousand square feet? That way, we know that that's what we're working towards, and something doesn't come back in August. It's, okay, well, no, we want to go back to nineteen. That just helps us know from a staff perspective and from, you know, GSBS's perspective that that's what we're going, that's what we're going to be designing.
I move that we continue down the path of designing and planning for a twenty-three thousand, eight hundred and forty-one square foot facility roughly.
I'll second that.
So, we have a motion that we continue our planning at the twenty-three thousand, eight hundred square feet. It's been seconded. Any other discussion?
Can I, can we discuss for just a second?
Yes, absolutely.
I, I just want to make sure that we're clear. I, I agree with what you're saying. I think that if we're going to do this in the time we need to do this, I think this vote is a vote that's going to give Tom the, okay, I'm going to go. So, just so everybody knows, I mean, we're, what we're voting on right now, what I understand and make sure we're voting on is, draw us a twenty-three thousand square foot building.
Or, or building that will accommodate all staff.
For six point nine.
Correct.
Yeah.
Well, it's not necessarily a number.
Well, it's, it's not, you're right.
We're just saying.
It's a planning number at this point, I think is the motion.
Right.
And obviously, that's going to be in flux a little bit as we go through it. But I think Stephen's looking for that decision. It is at a nineteen thousand-foot, square foot or a twenty-four thousand square foot roughly building. So, he gets a definitive answer from us that that's where we're headed.
Right, so a, so a yes vote is, Tom, go build, bring us back a building that works, and we're going to move forward.
That accommodates all staff.
Yes, all right. So, let's, I will change the motion that said move forward, planning and design for the construction of a building that accommodates all staff at one location, which based on current designs is roughly twenty-four thousand square feet. And the second was whom?
And I'll second that again.
Jim Perro, all right?
I do have a question, Tom. I think it was sixty minutes, but they were saying that the new millenniums, I guess those little kids, they prefer open space, not offices? Have you been running across that? Is that sort of been your, you know, when you go to conventions?
Okay, I'm going to call that question out of order. We have, we have a motion. We have a motion on the floor we can vote on, and then you can ask that question. But the motion doesn't have anything to do with that question.
Yeah, you'll pay for that one.
I know you, but you're out of order. All right. So, anyone want to discuss the motion? All right, hearing none. All those in favor of the motion, please show your hands. All opposed, same sign. It is unanimous. Stephen, did that give you?
Yes, sir.
Your answer, and Tom, you're quick. Now, we have Councilmember Mayor Protim Lamont, who has a question about open space, which I really think is irrelevant to the plans at this point, but that's all right, he can say it.
Greg, we, we tend to find both in the, in the public market and the private market that about fifty percent of the clients like open space and fifty percent don't.
So, where I was going with that, would that save us any square footage?
Probably not, but it might save some construction costs.
Costs, huh?
Less doors, less walls.
But then, but then that item, Greg, I just want you to make sure that if you do that, there's this item on here that's called furnishings. Item five, that might be adjusted because of that.
Well, I think we pull that out, that's a.
But you're still going to have to pay for it. All right.
Cubicles are free.
Thank you. Thank you, Tom. Thank you very much. Anybody, any citizens have a comment? All right. Thank you, Tom. All right. Let's move on to item eleven. Consider and take appropriate action regarding the acceptance of the audit for the town of Trophy Club fiscal year 2013, 2014. I think we have a presentation by John DeBarrow. That is, John?
Yes.
And so, let's watch that presentation. Counsel, you've been given a couple of items at the desk tonight. And at the end of the presentation, we would entertain a motion to approve the auditor's report. John, thank you for coming tonight. Sorry you had to wait.
That's okay. It was an exciting presentation. It's very exciting times with the, the thought of a new facility in the future for the town. My presentation's not as exciting, but it is very necessary. I thank you for inviting me here this evening to speak for you. My name is John DeBarrow, and I'm senior audit manager with Weaver. And I'm here to present the results of the audit of the town's financial statements for the fiscal year ended September thirtieth, 2014. And I met with the audit committee last week. This presentation is similar to the one that I went over to them with them last week. But some things I want to cover is just a basic introduction about the audit, the audit process, the audit results. Go through a little bit of our required auditor communications. Then I have some slides that provide some financial highlights with numbers that are derived directly from both this year and last year's CAFRs. And also to make mention of some new accounting standards that are going to be required to be implemented in 2015. And before I begin, I'd like to apologize that Sean Park was unable to make it back in town to join me this evening. But Sean was an important member of our audit team. He's our partner in charge on the engagement. I served as the senior audit manager on the town's audit. And joining us was Holly Matthews. Holly was our senior audit associate, who is responsible for performing the day-to-day audit procedures. Going over the audit process a little bit with you. If you can slow this down. What I want to start with is to describe the audit process itself. Our audit's conducted in accordance with generally accepted auditing standards as well as government auditing standards. And we take a risk-based approach to the audit process. And that really means is that we identify various areas that we feel are more likely to present the possibility of material misstatement in the financial statements. And we tailor our resources and our audit programs to be more heavily weighted in those areas. And we've listed some of those areas of higher risk, such as revenues and the related receivables, capital. those areas of higher risk, such as revenues and the related receivables, capital projects, purchasing and bidding compliance, payables and accrued liabilities, and expenditures. And we began the audit process back in July and August of last year with some of our planning. We came out during September to perform our interim fieldwork. At that time, we performed things such as walkthroughs of the town's accounting transaction cycles, things like cash disbursements, payroll, P-cards, various receipts like municipal court and other utility billing receipts. We walked through the processes, identifying the controls, walking through the controls to make sure that they're in place and acting as designed. We tested accounting controls over cash disbursements, tested construction in progress, as well as the town's compliance with the Public Funds Investment Act. When we came back in January and early February to perform our final fieldwork, we use a combination of various techniques such as vouching material transactions, sampling transactions, and applying analytical procedures to the town's balances and activity. And all during the process, we received full cooperation from the town's staff. And I'd like to thank Stephen and the rest of the finance staff for all of their cooperation that we received in making this a successful audit. Of course, you probably want to know about the audit results. Well, we've issued a couple of reports that you're aware of, one of which is our Independent Auditor's Report. And in that report, we provide our opinion on the town's financial statements. We've issued what's called an unmodified opinion, which means that we feel that the town's financial statements for the fiscal year ended September 30th are in accordance, are fairly presented in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. So congratulations on an unmodified opinion. We've also issued what's called the Independent Auditor's Report on internal control over financial reporting and on compliance and other matters, based on an audit performed in accordance with government auditing standards. In this report, we have no findings. There were no material weaknesses or significant deficiencies that were noted. We did issue a management letter with one comment suggesting some improvements on controls over journal entries. As I mentioned, we have required communications with those charged with governance. The first are our responsibilities under govern, I'm sorry, under generally accepted auditing standards. And those are to express an opinion on the town's financial statements based on our audit, as to whether those financial statements are fairly presented in all material respects in accordance with GAAP. Again, we've issued our report and we've issued a clean opinion. In addition to those responsibilities that we have under generally accepted auditing standards, we also have responsibilities under government auditing standards, and that's to issue a report on our consideration of the town's internal control of a financial reporting and compliance. If we were to come upon any, we would note any significant deficiencies, including material weaknesses in that report, but we did not have any findings that were noted. Other areas of required communication, including, include informing the council of any new accounting pronouncements. There was one new accounting pronouncement this year called GASB65. It's entitled Items Previously Reported as Assets and Liabilities. The most significant impact of this statement was that issuance costs associated with issuing debt previously were recorded as assets and amortized into expense in the government-wide financial statements and proprietary financial statements previous to GASB65. But under this new statement, those costs are now going to be expensed when the bonds are issued. Any remaining unamortized costs are, were removed from the statement of net position and shown as a cumulative effect of accounting principle, a change in accounting principle. There was one restatement in the General Fund and Capital Projects Fund of $96,000 to correct reconciling errors involving various payables from the transition to the general ledger system that took place a couple of years ago. There were no fraud or illegal acts noted, no material weaknesses. We reviewed the town's estimates, more significant estimates that are embodied in the financial statements, those being the estimates of allowances for uncollectible receivables, the OPEB, or what's known as other post-employment benefits, and the estimated useful lives of capital assets used in calculating depreciation expense. We reviewed the underlying assumptions for these estimates and felt that they were reasonable in relation to the financial statements taken as a whole. We encountered no difficulties in the course of our audit. There were no independence issues. In the area of audit adjustments, we're required by auditing standards to inform you of any adjustments that were made to the financial statements. There were no significant audit adjustments to report. And there were four, what we call uncorrected misstatements, which are deemed to be immaterial, both individually and as a whole, to the financial statements. I'd like to take just a few moments to go through some financial highlights with you. Again, as I mentioned earlier, these numbers are derived directly from the town's CAFER. This first slide provides a comparison of governmental activities net position. The governmental activities are the town's governmental funds, like the General Fund, Debt Service Fund, non-major funds, like special revenue funds, all collapsed together in one column of information on a full accrual basis of accounting. So the governmental activities net position as of September 30th of 2014 totaled $57.3 million. This was a $0.3 million decrease from the previous year. I've listed out the various components of net position here. The largest change was the net investment in capital assets. That decreased by $1.1 million, primarily due to the fact that current year depreciation was greater than additions to capital assets. The next slide provides a similar presentation of business-type activities net position. And the business-type activities are the town's Storm Drainage Fund and the Trophy Club Park Funds in the aggregate. And net position for the business-type activities as of September 30th, 2014 was $556,000. This was a significant increase of $273,000 over the previous year, most of which involved the net investment in capital assets increasing by $331,000. The next slide that you see provides an assessment of the governmental funds' fund balances. As of September 30th, 2014, the town's governmental funds had a total fund balance of $8.1 million, which you can see in the table here, most of which was contained in the town's General Fund with a $3 million balance and the Capital Projects Fund with a $4.5 million balance. Overall, the town's fund balance increased by $3.2 million. And this is primarily due to the $2.4 million increase in the Capital Projects Fund, the result of issuing $2.5 million of bond proceeds and $600,000 of no proceeds in 2014. Also, a couple of things I wanted to mention is that the General Fund fund balance increased by $515,000 this past year. And what's called the unassigned fund balance of the General Fund was $2.8 million as of September 30th. And this represents 37% of the General Fund expenditures, which is considered very healthy. The next two slides provide a comparison of the governmental funds' revenues and expenditures for 2014. Overall, the governmental funds' revenues in 2014 totaled $10.2 million. This was a $0.2 million decrease from the previous year. And there were a few things that netted to this $0.2 million decrease. For one, ad valorem taxes increased by $0.6 million this past year. Intergovernmental revenues decreased by $0.5 million due to decreased contributions from 4A and 4B. And grant revenues decreased by $0.4 million due to the fact that the majority of the reimbursements under the inter-local agreement related to the roundabout were received in the previous year. On the other side of things, looking at the governmental funds' expenditures, total expenditures for the governmental funds were $10.2 million in this past year. That was about a $700,000 decrease from fiscal year 2013. The biggest contributor to this decrease was the fact that debt service expenditures decreased by $1.3 million this past year. On the other side of things, capital outlay increased by approximately $700,000, and highway and streets expenditures decreased by $0.6 million. Looking at the town's Enterprise Fund revenues and expenses, again, these are the Trophy Club Park and the Storm Drainage Fund in the aggregate. Total net position, as I mentioned earlier, increased by $273,000 in 2014. Trophy Club Park net position increased by just $8,000, while the town's Storm Drainage Fund increased by $265,000. Operating revenues as a whole were $577,000. This was a $71,000 increase over the previous year, most of which was related to the town's Storm Drainage Fund, which increased $50,000 over the previous year. Operating expenses were pretty much flat, just a small decrease over the previous year. Finally, the General Fund Budgetary Comparison Schedule, which I believe is located on page 58 of the CAFER, presents for the General Fund both the original and amended budgets, as well as the actual revenues and expenditures. And here, I tried to show graphically a presentation of the budget and actual revenues and expenditures. Overall, the General Fund experienced a $458,000 favorable budgetary variance in 2014. Looking at both sides of this, the actual revenues, which were $8.2 million this past year, were $157,000 more than budgeted, primarily due to the fact that intergovernmental revenues were $174,000 more than budget. And then looking at the other side of things with the expenditures, actual expenditures of $7.6 million were 200, I'm sorry, $326,000 less than budgeted. One other thing that I mentioned earlier was that there are new standards. GASB has been very busy the last few years creating new accounting pronouncements. And next year is a big one for all state and local governments. GASB68, entitled Accounting and Financial Reporting for Pensions, becomes effective. And that requires governments for the first time to report a liability on a government-wide and proprietary fund, financial statements for the first time. And we will make sure that we, we work with Stephen and the rest of his staff to ensure that this new pronouncement is properly implemented. Again, I'd like to thank, thank the town for all the staff, all the cooperation that we received in making this a successful audit. And I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you, John. Council, any questions of the presentation or of the auditor? It's not, John, thank you very much for your presentation and for your work on the audit. And on behalf of the council, would like to thank the staff for the good job. Stephen, Stephen, John, and everyone else that was involved in pulling together the information and making this a successful audit, and once again, doing a great job. So thank you, everyone. John, any questions for us?
No.
Is this, I'll just ask you a question. When you say you can be proud of this, is this typical or is this non-typical? In your experience, as far as not having any deficiencies, not having the different things?
I, I think it's more typical than un-typical, but I, sometimes, I'm very happy that this took place, knowing that there was some, some transition in, in the finance department. I, I have to say that I think Stephen is a very good fit here in, in Trophy Club and-
Which Stephen are you referring to?
Yes, I'm sorry.
Both Stephens.
Anyone else named Stephen?
Next person we hire has to be named Stephen.
Yes. Stephen Glickman, you know, came on board last year during the fiscal 2013 audit. And I believe that this was your, your first experience as a finance director. And I, I had to commend him that, that he did an excellent job. I was very, very impressed with the, the way he took things over and, and had things in order, and was also able to take over the, the writing of the CAFER and the presentation of the financial statements.
And I ask that because I think last year, I remember I was new like town, but it was one of the first years that we had not had deficiencies. And so it's good that it's continuing.
Last year was the first year that we had not had a significant deficiency.
Right.
Because previously, the auditors were, were preparing the document. So we, we took that over, which eliminated that deficiency and also saved us $5,000 a year.
So good job. So a couple of items to point out. Stephen Seidel, there, I think there were other staff maybe that worked hard that, that we may not be aware of, that you might want to mention to us. And the other aspect is when we went through our budget amendment, counsel, not long ago, that that is part of the process of not having any deficiencies. If we don't do that, we're going to get written up for overspending a budget item if that was the case. So it's an important process that we need to watch. And, and that's part of what is happening to us. The one figure, and I don't remember whether it was $34,000 or $38,000, that was an adjustment, was attributed to the fact that because the town went through two conversions in software programs to do accounting, and there was restructuring of general ledger account numbers, there was an account that had no activity, but actually had a balance in it. And so the process was identifying that, researching that, see what the issue was, making the appropriate journal entry to zero that account, which was no longer in use. And we talked about that as an audit committee, in more detail about it. So that was one of the, the things that got us. So good. Anybody else? Stephen, you want to comment on anyone else?
Yeah, I would, first, for those residents at home who may watch this, an unmodified or clean opinion is fancy accounting terms, just saying it's the highest level you can get. In other words, our books are in order, and when the auditors look at it, they don't see any material weaknesses. And what we do day-to-day, when they go in and audit our transactions from the previous year. And I think deficiencies, I, like Councilmember Schaffner brought up, is that, you know, that's something that we work very hard on to make sure that there are no even minor deficiencies or major deficiencies in what we do. And we are looking constantly to help to improve or better our control systems. How do we separate duties while maintaining efficiency throughout the day? He, you know, John mentioned Stephen Glickman and Jay-Z, or John Zagorski, but he's Jay-Z to us. And Big John, I mean, I think he has more nicknames than us, but, you know, the, I would be remiss if I didn't state that April Ezell, if she didn't get a lot of credit for her assistance, and Eddie Peacock, who I brought on board to help us during the time that Stephen left, just on his sabbatical, and came back to us like the prodigal. And, and Eddie, Eddie did a great job in the interim, and Eddie is really good at what he does. And he's been a great, you know, he's kind of an extension of the staff. But really, between April, John, and Eddie, they did an outstanding job keeping us on track and managing the process. Stephen came in, and, you know, we were joking in the meeting that he actually was part of two audits this year, and that's kind of unusual. But he also came in and was able to contribute and pull everything, the kind of final pieces together. And I'm really proud of our staff, that we've got phenomenal folks, so.
Thank you, Stephen. Thank you, staff, everyone. April, thanks for working. I knew that April, that was outside the Public Information Officer duties to go research and pull together data, but nevertheless was doing that. So we appreciate that, April Ezell.
It's a different April.
Different April. Different April.
Different April.
Yeah, we like that.
That April did too.
See, right now, we try to hire people with the same name. So we've got two Rons, two Rons, two Aprils, two Stevens.
Never mind, April.
Yeah. April does a great job too, so she, she helps, she helped put the photo on the front and did some other things for us.
That's where my brain went. Okay. All right, well, all right. April Ezell, yes.
I would make them
Recognize Councilmember Rowe for a motion.
Yes, sir. I've made, moved that we accept the fiscal year two thousand fourteen audit.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Reed. Any other discussion?
I guess we should thank our audit committee.
Oh, please.
That's not part of the motion, but thank you for doing so. You're out of order. All those in favor of the motion, show your hands. All opposed, same sign. No opposed, it is unanimous. John, thank you for coming tonight.
Thank you, everyone.
Appreciate your diligence in that.
Keep a running score.
I'm sorry, I just wanted to do that. Item twelve, consider to take appropriate action regarding the options provided by the town staff for general signage on poles and painted on road beds regulating traffic within and around the roundabout previously discussed at town council meeting on February the twenty-fourth, two thousand and fifteen. Stephen, are you making the presentation or the chief or Tom?
Actually, Tom Rutledge is going to walk the town council through this, but this is based upon feedback given at the February twenty-fourth meeting. We did have Chief Arata and Ed Hilton and Pat Cook and Tom Rutledge and his staff look at what options are there. And we wanted to bring back some information to you and provide some recommendations or get some feedback on how you'd like to move forward.
So, Tom, while you're getting ready to do that, I'm going to turn the chair over to Mayor Protem Lamont for a few minutes while I take a break. Please excuse me. May I be excused?
Just you?
May I be excused?
Yes, absolutely. Don't, don't hurry back.
It's a power grab.
Yeah. Excuse me. Sir, sir. I showered. I got, I got this.
I'm the one that always gets up.
I, I got this.
Oh. My hourly rate is pretty high.
You don't get the Bennys though. Oh, yeah.
Chicken, vegetables, and sweet potatoes.
I'm going to get them out of my hands. Here we go.
I picked them off the floor.
You know, we should have thrown them.
Should we adjourn for a few minutes while they're, uh,
Yeah, I'm, I'm My hour in the sun is fading pretty quickly here.
Greg, Greg, Greg. Can we take a quick break then?
Okay, we'll take a fi- five-minute break. At nine fifty-five.
You want to turn the chair back over to me?
No, that's okay. I'm, I'm in, I'm in total charge. Just call me General Hague. That's, you have to be old enough to understand that joke.
Go right ahead, Tom. We'll see how you do.
Okay, I, I'm glad to do it. I'm nervous, but I'm You have a right to do it.
You better believe it.
I don't know where this is going.
Neither does he.
Well, we're, good to see you guys tonight. When we, I guess we were at the council, maybe it was in February, when we brought the, the roundabout signage at your request, wanted to discuss that. On March the thirtieth, we met here with Chief Arata and Mike Wilson and myself and Ed Hilton at your direction to talk about the roundabout signage. So, we had that discussion the last time we were at council. There were questions about the, the signage we had. And so basically the PowerPoint that I've got here is the same as what we discussed before. I went through the uniform traffic control devices, what, what we have up there. And again, just for a quick review, the, the signage that's in question are the pedestrian warnings, the pedestrian crossing signs at the roundabout. And so the MUTCD that we use, manual, uniform traffic control devices, has those as optional. We took and, as we discussed before, we included those in the design. That's what's out there today. We took a more conservative approach to it. We met with Chief Arata, we looked at that and discussed that, and we all agree that as, as is here, that those signs, if you determine to take them down, it's consistent with what we see at other roundabouts. It's consistent with what is allowed by the signage that, that we use for designing the roundabout.
Are you saying it's consistent to take them down, or they're consistent the way they are?
Well, it's, it can, I guess you could say consistency is really subjective in that you do see, you do see these signs on some roundabouts and you do see them not. And so it's, if you did take them down, it's, I guess the consistency, Mayor, what I'm saying there is you would be consistent with what is allowed or recommended by the manual, uniform traffic control devices. So, taking them down is consistent with that. So that's our, that's our guideline that we use and what all public facilities use for that. So, they're, they're there because when we presented this to the previous council during the design, we presented the, the signage there. That was the determination when we presented the PowerPoint to them with the signage and that's how that was approved and therefore that's how it was constructed. If you determine tonight to take them down, certainly that's in keeping with what is allowed to do that. So that, I guess that's the best way to say that. And so, and just in reviewing that then, we're talking about all the signs that are the pedestrian crossing signs that we talked about as you enter into the throat of the roundabout. Those are the ones.
You have to use the mouse.
Oh, I'm sorry, because you guys, I apologize. I knew that and I forgot. So it's, it's, it are, it's these signs here, as you come into the throat of the roundabout, it is these pedestrian signs that we're talking about that, that point to the cross, crosswalks there that we're talking about taking down. So just going ahead to that, you've already seen the street view.
Is that ten signs?
It's eleven.
You know, I forgot, I, um,
Eleven. Yeah, it's, it's eleven.
Okay.
Of the dual crosswalk with arrows.
So, if you, this is what it looks like now, and if you take, take them out, that's what you would end up with there.
Now, I got to tell you, for the first time the other day, a walker went across and it was chaos. One guy slammed on his brakes. I was coming this way. I slammed, and the guy behind him, ah! So it's like you don't see them. So all those signs, they really don't matter. All those signs were there and no one really paid attention to the guy.
Well, it's, it's like anything we all do, driving, and we get distracted and it's just people paying attention to it, so. Anyway, that's what you would end up having there and, and what is here is consistent with what, what we talk about on the, on the MUTCD recommendations for signage. So, that, that's that, the first portion of that. Now, I know that there were twenty mile an hour signs that were put up that weren't part of our design. Those got put up earlier or later after the project was completed and I think those, are those already down, Stephen?
No, they're not.
Okay.
They're still there.
So I think you guys have directed that those would come down, which is, is fine there. We didn't, we never had those in our design to begin with. So that's what we're here tonight to show you those and let you guys make a decision on what you want to do there moving forward.
I'll make a motion to accept this proposal as shown here.
I'll accept it. I mean, I'll accept it. I'll second it.
Yeah, you can discuss after.
Wait, wait, you put the motion on the floor, then you discuss.
I'll second it.
Oh, oh, I'm sorry. I wonder why it's out of order.
I'll second the motion. I'll second the motion. Mr. Mayor, would you like me to turn the meeting back over to you?
He would like you to do that.
That'd be great. We have a motion
Don't rush that decision.
To accept the proposed changes at the roundabout for eliminating signage. So, any discussion? The motion was made by Rowe and seconded by Kurtz. Yes, Tim.
Did we do anything about the lines and the, the little thing you needed to be able to actually ticket people coming through? Double line? And putting the little?
The, the street through coming from, continuing on Trophy Club, we talked about that and that's something we still want to look at because of the tennis courts. So the, the amount of laneage that we would be limiting by that line, the double, you're talking about the double white lines, if anybody were to cross that, is very short. Because of the entry into the roundabout, going from east to northwest, it, we would have to cut it off. If you'd back the, Tom, would you show them where we would want to limit that line to allow people to transition from the roundabout to make the tennis court?
Yeah, the second half. I, I get it.
Yeah, so we're still looking at that. We've watched that and that's where, if you go drive through it, you see where all the, the reflectors have been knocked out. That would be the start, the end of where we would put a double line. So it's really only, what, maybe fifteen feet? So it doesn't even really serve a purpose for what we were talking about.
Okay.
Because it's very short.
It, it's kind of like you solve one problem and create another because, like, like Chief Arata said, when, when this car is moving in this direction and he's in the roundabout, has full right of way, if you have this all as a double line here to keep this car from moving over, at the same time, you, you're hindering this car from getting over here to make this right turn. And, and in effect, you'd almost force him to wait till he gets down here and then if he crosses another lane of traffic, well, that's illegal too. So, we create other problems there. And we really, what we really want to do is, we want to make this to where the traffic in the roundabout really has full right of way so that they can move where they need to. Everybody, when they come to enter the roundabout, they're to observe and see what's happening and let those cars do what they want to do and they yield to them and then they make their move.
Is, is that, no, I know we're getting off topic, but is that normal for the right lane to go into a roundabout and have the right of way? I've never seen that anywhere else.
Well, the, no, once the, the, this car that's in the roundabout has the right of way.
Right, but the, the right-hand lane doesn't stop at all. They, they just
They're not in the roundabout.
They're outside the roundabout.
So who yields?
But, but the average person, I mean,
Outside lane has the right of way in that ri- in that lane.
Okay. I mean, I guess by the definition, they're not in the roundabout, but to the average person, they're in the roundabout. I mean, that's reality, but okay. It's a different topic, whatever.
That's probably more of a police call. I don't know that I could say
As they exit the roundabout, they're both in their independent lane and, and like, so it said, that once they transition over and form another car, they're, they're going to be ticketed.
Yeah, well, okay.
So, not, but adding the double line to that extent would make it worse at this time, but what I would do
One lane going into it instead of two.
What I'd like to do is take the signs down and continue to monitor the roundabout. And we've done a fairly good job of watching it over the last couple of weeks. And, and I think by removing that many signs, we'll definitely free up some vision there.
Tom, would you go back to or forward wherever you want and show me exactly which signs are going to be removed some way?
So, that's what the signs are today.
Yep.
And then you can just see that those are the ones that are being removed.
Do it again.
It's, it's significant.
So, plus the speed limits, the twenty mile an hour speed limits.
Those are all the pedestrian crossing signs that you guys had asked about having removed. And so those are the ones that are pointing to the, to the pedestrian crossing.
So, so we're, so that, those are still crosswalk locations?
Absolutely.
Oh, yeah. And the, and the brick designates that?
And they're recognized. I mean, people would recognize those. It just don't signs to point them out, but those signs are very large.
It, it's really no different than right here, when you're down here at Village Trail. Somebody crossing here, you're in a crosswalk. You know, once you're in a painted designated crosswalk, whether it's painted or designated by bricks or anything other, you, the pedestrian has the right of way.
Just for clarity on that particular section, we now have the flasher, so that sign will not come down.
At the Wolfway Trophy Lake.
One, one thing, and I think that I mentioned this way back when we were talking about crosswalks. It, it would be nice, and you see this in a lot of towns, but to have a solid white line on either side of the brick so that you, so that you designate, I haven't seen that on, we haven't done that, but I think that that would be helpful in this situation especially because we have brick at Trophy Wood, but I wouldn't consider that a crosswalk, but it's, it's more aesthetics.
This is what you see when you're approaching the crosswalk.
And I, I think if you had that white line on either side, that really designates that that's a crosswalk. And you see that in South Lake, you see that in most cities.
Arthur, can you go back to the page you had? All right, so this is maybe going to be hard for me to describe, but top of the screen that has a sign that says crosswalk ahead down below, right there, okay? That one I am not in favor of removing, nor am I in favor of removing the one on Trophy Club down to the bottom right that is crosswalk ahead. I think there's some value to those in notification. So I'm going to vote against the motion to remove all of them.
Would you like to make an amendment?
See how people feel. Garrett?
Chief, the twenty mile an hour signs, is the speed limit in the roundabout twenty miles an hour? It is not.
Thirty.
That was my question. Okay.
Let me ask you, the, okay, along with what the mayor is saying, down on the bottom, go over to your, well, I don't know what it, to your right, right, right there. That, that ahead, where is that crosswalk at?
That, that, there is, there is
There isn't one.
That's a roundabout sign.
Roundabout ahead sign. That's just the warning for the roundabout.
Move your mouse. I can't see your mouse.
Right below that yield, right, right in the middle of Tom Thumb, there's, there's a
No, back to the left or to your right. He's talking about on Trophy Lake Drive?
No, I'm, right there on Tom Thumb. You see, right in the middle of the roof.
To your left.
Yes, that, that's Village Trail. That's where the flasher is today.
But it says ahead.
Right, because once you transition through the roundabout, you get, you go right into one.
Oh, so that's, that's telling you that there's
You guys are still talking about the different ones.
No, he's, no, he's, Chief's right. He's saying that that's telling you, as you go into the roundabout, you're going to hit a, hit a crosswalk, which
Which is around the corner.
Which depends on if you go to the right or to the left. Whether you hit that, so that's kind of, I think that one is not
So let's go down Trophy Lake and it looks like just to the right of your, to the left of your mouth, yeah, that one. And then if you go up Trophy Lake a little bit, there's another crosswalk ahead. No, on the other side of the road. Nope, go down, right there.
That's the one I was talking about.
So there are two of them on the right side of the road, on right side of Trophy Lake Drive, that both say crosswalk ahead.
But one is telling you Village Trail and the other one
Village Trail, the other one is telling you
In the roundabout.
In the roundabout.
That right there, which is kind of odd, but depending on which lane you're in.
I realize it's a lot of signs. I just don't know, when I made my, when I made my comment, those were two that I could clearly identify that I thought might stay.
And, and the two you're talking about, Your Honor, is that they're far enough away from the roundabout, they don't really influence it? Those two that Councilman Schaffner was talking about are actually right there on top of it.
That's right, and that's, that's the reason I'm kind of not including those necessarily in my comments.
I agree with your, I agree with those two, leaving those two, as long as you paint the, the solid white line to, to let you know that that is a crosswalk and not just
It's easier to leave them and then take them down later on if we feel they're not necessary, rather than take them down, put them back.
Let me ask a question and, and I'm just throwing
Let me ask a question, and, and I'm just throwing it out there, as I kind of think through painting the lines there. Do you see any issue, Chief, with people anticipating that when you see sometimes a solid white line, that is to stop? Is that a concern?
There's a possibility of that, but I think, you know, we'll work with, with streets and come up with an answer.
Okay.
I mean, I would rather them stop than not stop if they see a solid white line.
I'll make a motion to amend the main motion to not eliminate the sign on Trophy Club Drive that I related to, that's.
Top left.
At the median. On the, I think it is on the southbound Trophy Club Drive before you even get to the roundabout, that sign. And the one on Trophy Club Drive that is northbound, I guess, maybe, that is before you get to the roundabout. Those two signs, to not remove those is my motion.
I'll second that.
So, I've moved and have a second? Any debate about that?
Is there going to be separate discussion about the Trophy Club Drive to Trophy Lake Drive and that problem area with the cars crossing over and the close proximity to Village Trail?
It sure can be, but it wouldn't be related to this motion to amend it.
It will be coming up later, okay.
While we're only talking about signage, is, did we give direction already to remove the twenty mile an hour signs in the previous meeting, or no?
I don't believe so, I believe it was, come back to you and we would.
Got it.
Look at all those signs, look at everything, because.
I didn't include those in there.
I, when I made my initial motion, and I wasn't perfectly clear in this, and I should have been, is that I was moving to accept what we viewed there as the end result, which obviously would have had those be absent, so.
Okay.
We may want to clean that up procedurally. Obviously, it's been amended, so.
All right, so we have a motion to amend that I made, consecuted by Mayor Protem Lamont. To keep the two signs, any further discussion?
I would like to make an amendment as well.
All right.
I would like to.
Amendment to, the amendment is in order.
I would like to add painting stripes on either side of the brick for, for the two crosswalks. Three crosswalks. No, there's only two.
What about the one at Village Trail, is that?
It's already painted.
It is.
It's striped.
It's not brick anyway.
Yeah.
It's what brick can.
Do I have a second? Philip moved to.
I'll second.
It's full brick.
All right. So, we have a second, my row, all right. Any discussion on the motion to amend the amendment? Hearing none, we'll vote on the amend to the amendment, and that is to add to the amendment, to put white stripes by the brick marked crosswalks on Trophy Club Drive. Any other discussion? Hearing none, call for the vote, all in favor, show your hands, it is unanimous, it does carry. We're now back to the motion, the amendment, which has been amended, which is to keep the two signs, one on southbound Trophy Club Drive, one on northbound Trophy Club Drive, that indicate crosswalk ahead. Along with adding the stripes for the crosswalks, any other discussion on that item?
And remove all of the signs.
Not yet, we'll get back to that in just a second.
Okay.
All right, all in favor of the amended amendment, show your hands. All in favor, same sign, all right. The main motion has been amended, and that is to remove the extra crosswalk signs in the roundabout area. Exclusive of the two signs that we voted to keep, and to paint stripes along the brick marked crosswalks on Trophy Club Drive. That's the motion at this point, and so, Jim, your motion to amend would be in order at this point if you wanted to mention the speed limits, is that what you were going to do?
Uh, yes. Although, I actually, I was talking about the Trophy Lake intersection, but.
Well, I.
That's a separate.
We know, I'm glad you brought that up, because we did look at that, what, what Councilmember Perro was referencing is as you head southbound onto Trophy Lake Drive, as you approach Village Trail, there is a median there, or there's a, a line that, or a. A lane, and he wanted to ask about extending a median there, and I'll, I'll let Tom talk about that.
Well, actually, the, the thought was to just get people to slow down and yield, and one of the suggestions in the previous meeting was maybe cobblestoning or doing something besides a speed bump, to get people to recognize the fact there is a yield sign there, and they're not paying attention to it, and, and some, some physical change to help make it safer.
That's because you, you're outside the rotary, the roundabout on that lane, but you're not outside the roundabout on that lane, which makes zero sense to the average commuter. I mean, it makes no sense.
And it's painted on the ground yield, they still go right through it.
All right, do you want to make a motion, Jim?
So, I'd like to make a motion that we do some physical change to the yield sign area, going from Trophy Club Drive to Trophy Lake Drive, to enhance the physical recognition of that yield that's being ignored.
Do you have a second?
I'm still, that should be an amendment to the.
It is an amendment, I'm taking it as an amendment. Do I have a second to the amendment? All right, it dies for lack of a second at this point, so we're back to the main motion. Any discussion or amendment to the main motion? Hearing none, yes, Ryland?
I would like to amend the main motion to include removal of the twenty mile per hour signs, I intended to do that initially, so, apologize.
Okay.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
All right, discussion of that item? Just, just for the point of discussion, I'm not going to vote in favor of that, I recognize it's not an enforceable sign in the sense of twenty mile per hour, but I still think it maybe adds some value in trying to tell people to slow down, so, that's just my opinion about it, but. All right, so we have a motion to amend by Rodden Row, consecuted by Tim Kurtz, to remove the twenty mile per hour speed limit signs. Any other discussion on the amendment? Hearing none, show your hands, all in favor, show your hands, all opposed, same sign, Nick Sanders opposed, everyone else for. The main motion has been amended again, so we're now back to the main motion to remove the crosswalk signs exclusively with the two that we kept, which were crosswalk ahead signs, to add striping along the brick indicated crosswalks on Trophy Club Drive, and remove the twenty mile per, mile per hour speed limit signs in the roundabout. Any other discussion? Hearing none, well, we have a citizen who wants to speak, come to the microphone, Bill.
Bill, Bill Rose, two nineteen Inverness, I'll owe you a sheet of paper here shortly. Hadn't planned on speaking, and I didn't bring along a PowerPoint. It's an inside joke. The area that Councilman Perro was speaking about, that particular bypass, if you want to call it that, or where the yield's at, I wonder, and I've thought about this more than once, as you come up to that position, there is a dotted line that goes on out around the roundabout, and I've looked at some ra, some spots in South Lake, where you have a similar type arrangement, maybe the entry isn't as designated as what we have, but they don't have the dashed line. And my point with the dashed line, I'm thinking it might be wise to remove it, because when you pull up there to the yield, you have a sense of ownership, that you've got that dashed line area going on out there that you own, and if it, that dashed line was not there, you would not have so much sense of ownership, and you might be more inclined to yield in the traffic that's in the area. Only a thought, thank you for your time.
Yeah, can, can somebody show that to us?
There it is.
Yeah, I see what he's saying.
Yeah, it does make sense.
What that in effect does is just, it, it just helps to, to keep this, so that the, this driver knows that they're still looking at two lanes is really when you're doing that.
I think it should stay personally, but, that's just me.
So that when they're carrying on, they're still keeping them, there's still two lanes here, and that's the, that's the purpose of it, but certainly, everything has a reason.
You're allowing for people to cross over to continue around the roundabout.
Right.
Which is its purpose of being a dashed line, same thing really exists coming northbound on Trophy Club Drive, if I wanted to enter into the roundabout and was in the wrong lane, if you paint two stripes, then it's against the law for me to cross, but I bet people cross because they forgot to get over in time. Garrett?
This may not be a solution, but a thought, what if we made the dotted line to where it ends right there, what if we made it a solid line? So, the people that are supposed to yield feel like they have their own lane again, and if you're inside that roundabout. So, you're coming down Trophy Club Drive, if that was a solid line and you wanted to go, if you wanted to take a right, when you got to Trophy Lake, you would pretty quickly realize that if you're going to be in that lane, you can't get over, and so maybe traffic would be able to, would start to funnel that way, whether they can cross it or not, because right now, they look at that as, anytime I think of a dotted line, I can cross it on the highway. When I see a solid line, I know that, I know it's supposed to be yellow, but.
I like that idea.
So, if it was solid.
Is the, is the yield too far back? Should it be up so you can see that somebody has the intention of going across?
For the reason that you don't want to put that yield any further down, the further down you get with that yield, and if he comes here, he's really looking back over his shoulder, and he can't see it. We, we want him up, we want him clear of the crosswalk, and we wanted him doing here so that he can still see that car right in here, and I guess, Chief, the question is, I think you helped clarify that a little bit for me, if that's a solid white line, this car, which we, this was the real concern we had when we were designing this, that so, the moms, when they're bringing their kids to school, they have the ability that this car's yielding, and they are, have the ability to get in this lane, to turn.
Right, right where the line starts.
So, even if that's a solid line, they can do that.
Right.
Psychologically, they might.
Psychologically, it would push them down.
And that's why we dashed it, so that they knew that they could cross, and that that car had to yield for that.
Most people think a solid line means you can't cross it.
Right, and I thought.
Yeah.
All right, so do we have, did he may make an amendment?
It was, it was more of a thought.
Do you want to make it, Garrett, do you want to make an amendment and try it?
I kind of need to process what was just said, ma, maybe the solid line needs to go down, not, see, there's four dotted lines, maybe you take it three down, and eliminate that last one. Let me make that amendment. Let me change the first three into a solid line and just eliminate that last one.
I'll second that.
All right.
If they're going to blow the yield sign anyway, adding a line one way or the other, they're not going to obey that either.
That's not a very large area, I mean, to, correct me if I'm wrong, but they start to come across pretty quick. Especially in the morning. Yeah.
And they really want, and you really want them to?
Yeah.
You really want them to get into that other lane just as quickly as you can, so that everybody knows what their intent is, because if they wait later and do it, it can confuse the driver that's in that yield and cause, cause issues there, if they wait to try to cross here, and he starts moving, and they wait down here, then he's stopping to let that yield happen.
Then what's the point of having the, the dotted?
It, it was only so that it, if, there's a, there's a sign further back up, that if you're in the right lane, it just says, right lane must turn right, and it's just to keep him designated to his lane, so that he doesn't go in and cross, sorry, I'm kidding.
Really, someone in that right lane should, should not be entering the roundabout.
Yeah, so actually, removal of the dotted line makes more sense than putting a solid line there.
Should be one lane going in the whole, whole thing, I mean, that, it should just, I know, should just be one lane.
Feel now that you have two lanes there, you remove the dots.
Yeah.
And that means the roundabout has primary access.
And this was just our discussion when we met with Chief and ourselves, when we had a conversation about it. I don't know, how long's the roundabout been there now, I, I forgot.
It seems like it's two.
Twenty years.
Twelve? Thirteen?
Eighty-nine.
Been there three years, and we've had one accident, I guess, right?
One, one that's classified as an accident because of the roundabout, the other two were.
So.
Impaired.
One of the things that we. Because why?
Impaired.
Oh, yeah, we had the guy that.
Went into it at about sixty, yeah.
Yeah, that was an interesting story.
But that yield is probably where we get the most complaints.
Absolutely, that's, I, I used to live off of Village Trail, and I always approached my home through town, because nobody exits Trophy Lake, because it sucked for ten years, so, I found that trying to get over was always a challenge every afternoon, so, and, and the, you don't want a solid line, because you want to allow people go, to go from Trophy Club Drive to Trophy Lake Drive to Village Trail, that's the whole reason for that even being there, and the yield even being there, so.
So, let me remove my amendment and change it to, so I'll remove, I want to remove my amendment, I'm making it a solid line, and change my amendment to removing the dashes altogether, and we'll see if I get a second.
All right, second, do you agree to that?
Yes.
All right, so Councilmember Reed moved, Lamont seconded, to remove the dash lines in the roundabout on Trophy Club Drive headed southbound, as they approach Trophy Lake Drive, remove the dash lines totally, that's your amendment?
And, explain to me again why you would remove those?
Because I think the logic is, when you come up to the yield sign right now, I think your instinct is that I have my own lane, so, there's really no, you're going to say, I've got my own lane, and there's nobody in my lane, so why should I yield? I'm yielding to somebody coming into my lane, that's what I think, okay, traffic comes off the highway, and they're coming into my lane, I'm going to yield, kind of like when you're on the access road here. Well, if the traffic comes off and they stay in their lane, there's no reason for you to yield. That, that would be my natural instinct, why should I yield if they're not, they're staying in their lane, I'm staying in mine, no reason to yield. If you pull up there and you look out, and there's only one lane, well, you know you've got to yield to who's ever coming into your one lane.
All right.
I would like to, I, I would like the Chief's opinion on this, because, I don't know. This wasn't one of the recommendations, obviously.
Well, the, the thought of the dash line is, it, it, it works both ways, it gives the person coming around the roundabout, the idea that they know they're going to get over, they have the ability to transition through that white line, but it also gives the person transitioning through the yield, a security blanket that, hey, I got at least that far. Correct me if I'm wrong, but that was the design, that was the idea of the design, give that, there was a, it's a neutral area for you there to party, so if we remove it, it then eliminates any neutral area whatsoever, and the person yielding now has no protection whatsoever.
All right, so I'm going to call for the vote on the motion to amend, which is to remove the dash lines that are in the roundabout on southbound Trophy Club Drive as it goes to Trophy Lake Drive, is that right, Garrett?
That is.
It's your motion?
Yes.
And so, any other discussion, hearing none, call for the vote, all those in favor of removing the lines, show your hands. I have Perro and Reed for, all opposed. Shoffner, Kurtz, Lamont, Sanders, Rowe voted against it, the motion to amend fails, we are back to the main motion, all those in favor of the main motion as amended, show your hands, all opposed, same sign, no opposed, it is unanimous, thank you, Tom.
You're welcome, that was fun.
Now, you are more of an expert on roundabouts, right?
Hey, that's all right, these, these.
Can we tear it out, put a light in?
Yeah. You need a stop sign on that. I just want to thank Councilman Power, I just want to thank Councilman Perro, listen to me, I just want to thank Councilman Perro for all this work that he did on this. Yes, thank you, sir.
Councilmember Perro.
You're very welcome.
You get Councilmember parking of the month.
Oh, I'm sorry, I apologize. No. I didn't get that, I'm sorry, I was, I came out of email. I'm sorry.
Come on up, come on up.
Come on up.
That was when Lamont was in charge.
Yeah, I was in charge then, so.
Blame me.
State your name and your address, and then your floor is yours.
Okay, I'm Laura Vandal, and I'm at One Meadowbrook Lane, and we're one of the weird ones, we're in Beck territory, but we go to Lakeview, and we have a permanent transfer, so I'm one of those mothers that takes the roundabout to school.
Bless you, my dear.
First off, I want to say thank you to the Chief, because your quick response to my email, and the next morning, my seven-year-old daughter was the first to realize that there was a cop sitting at the roundabout, and that just made her morning, so, I appreciate that, and I appreciate Jim Perro for your response back to me on the Trophy Club page as well, you know, you said if we want to do something about it, we need to be here, so, that's why I'm here. I know this sounds harsh, but in my personal opinion, the roundabout is as simple as can be, signs don't mean anything, people ignore them, we live in a me selfish world, and it's the first one there, and the, you know, who can be there? and it's the first one there, and the, you know, who can be there first? It's like a NASCAR race, and that's how it feels every morning. Uh, my child has now moved to behind the driver's side, because she fears of getting in an accident. Um, I personally love the roundabout, I grew up in this town, moved away, and then now I'm raising my family here, and the stop sign was awful, especially when 114, cause traffic would back all the way up past the country club, and that's just ridiculous for all of us who live in this town. Um, I do think some of the main problem is Roanoke. I think that there are a lot of commuters that cut through from that back portion of Roanoke to miss out on all of the traffic on 114. I will say this, since you had the police officer parked there, this last week has been ten times better. We have not had one person run through that roundabout and almost hit us. So I do think having the police presence, even though I strongly disagree that you should babysit the roundabout, sorry. Um, but I do think for a while, though, having police presence will make a difference. And if it means writing tickets, no warnings, I'm sorry, but, you know, if that's what it's gonna take, then I guess it's what it's gonna take. Um, other than that, I appreciate your services that you guys do. I agree about the signs, and I agree with keeping the two crosswalk signs that you see, because now that there's not a crossing guard on Trophy Club Drive, there are a couple children that just like to kinda dart out, so seeing those signs on Trophy Club Drive, I do think it helps. The rest of signage, I think people ignore. It's just like, I work in South Lake, and they put on those, please yield to the U-turn, right-hand turn now has to yield to U-turn, nobody pays attention to all those brand-new big signs they put in each intersection, so. Um, again, I think you leave it as it is, I think the additional police effort, you know, will hopefully do something. Um, I do, I do not feel that it's a lot of Trophy Club residents. I, I truly feel that our biggest problem is the morning commute, and all those cut-through traffic, so, again.
Thank you very much, I apologize for missing you.
That's okay, no worries. Y'all have a wonderful night, thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, we will move on to, um, item thirteen. Consider and take appropriate action regarding the ordinance of the town amending Article One Animals of Chapter Two, Animal Control of the Code of Ordinances of the Town by amending Section 1.01 definitions, and by repealing Section 1.16 Livestock, Wild or Permitted Animals, and by adopting a new Section 1.16 Prohibiting and Keeping Harboring, harboring of fowl within the town, Providing a Penalty and Providing an Effective Date. Uh, Council, the, uh, Animal Control Board, uh, did, uh, try to get together and meet this last week. Uh, didn't quite accomplish everything they set out to accomplish. And Susan Etstrom contacted me and said they really were not finished and ready to make a recommendation, uh, to Council, and, uh, did request that we table the item. Uh, I told her that the item was there to at least allow us to have some discussion, uh, because we, we had asked it to come back on the agenda, that was specific direction that we provided, and so it's here to have some discussion, um, but it's your pleasure, if you wanna table it without any discussion, you may do so. You can have some discussion and just take no action, um, and wait for the Animal Control Board to report back to us. Their task was not to make a decision, allow foul or not, but what you might consider if you wanted to change the ordinance, like, if you wanna allow fa- foul, how many, what's considered foul, um, if you don't wanna allow it, what kinda timeframe do you wanna give people to react to that? Citizen, uh, Susan did tell me that she has a count of roughly thirty families who do have, uh, chickens, uh, at home. Uh, she also advised me that typically, there are at least two, and that's because the people that sells chickens say that chickens are, um.
Social.
Social.
Social animals, and really like to be with another chicken like themselves, and so, um, it, you could make a decision tonight that says, "I just wanna eliminate chickens," if that was your decision. And then, their job would be finished potentially. If you don't want that, then don't make, take any action in that regard, and we'll move forward. So anybody wanna discuss or make comments or make a motion?
I, I motion, we table this, and if I get a second, I'll explain why.
Second.
I will explain why. Um.
Councilmember Reed moved, uh, Rowe seconded, go ahead, Councilmember Reed.
Uh, for some reason, I thought that this was not gonna be on the agenda tonight, so I did not prepare myself by looking at any of this stuff, and I really don't wanna discuss something that I haven't spent the time reviewing. That's why I would, just, that's me personally, um, I didn't. I don't, I don't know where I missed the memo, but I didn't think it was gonna be on here.
I, I agree, and I, I was the one that was pushing, you know, to have Animal Control meet, uh, the Animal Control Board, because we had tasked this before, uh, at the end of last year, and they did meet last week, um, and I, I sent you the link to, to listen to the meeting. I, I think that, and maybe Chief can help us with this, um, the, there were two committee members that wanted access to, um, the Animal Control Officer, and tha- and that was denied uh, for a Saturday meeting, because they, they worked during the week, so I don't know if you can accommodate that. Uh, um, I know that she's tasked with working at the dog park, but perhaps if they could meet for an hour or two. But, I, I think that we, now that they've met, I think we owe it to at least give them the opportunity to look at it and bring it back to us for a recommendation.
Alright, any other, uh, conversation about the motion to table? Hearing none, we'll call for the vote. All those in favor of the motion to table, show your hands. All opposed, same sign, it does pass unanimous. It will stay tabled until we get the board ready to make a motion, Stephen, or make a recommendation. Alright. Item fourteen, consider and take appropriate action regarding the mid-year financial report for financial year 2015. Uh, who is going to talk?
I am, Mayor.
Stephen is going to talk.
One of the Stevens, yes. Uh, Mayor and Council, this is our mid-year financial report, uh, for fiscal year 2015. Uh, the report is basically the same format that we give you every month, and the reason for that is, last year, that was the first time that we had prepared that report in that format, and I believe Councilman Schaffner, Schaffner had requested that we do that monthly, so we've kinda just kept doing that every month. So we give you a lot of information each month. Uh, so for the mid-year, we've basically just done the same thing and added a, uh, a, a little more, uh, narrative information, uh, to that. Uh, so the general fund so far through March thirty-first has received seventy-seven percent of the, uh, total revenue that we had budgeted, and expenditures are totaled at forty-four percent, which is, uh, about a six percent, uh, positive variance for us. We've received ninety-eight percent of our property taxes, uh, franchise fees, we will receive the bulk of those in May with the, uh, annual electric and gas franchise fees. Uh, fines and fees are at about thirty-eight percent of the budget, and that is because, um, recreational fees are seasonal, and we'll get a lot of those during the summer. Uh, we've received, uh, seventy-eight percent of charges for services, that's because we receive, uh, NISD, uh, pre-funding for the student resource officers, and we've also received a large, larger kid reimbursement this year. And on the expenditure side, there're lo- uh, most departments are largely in line with the budget. Facility maintenance has consumed seventy-two percent of their budget, and that is because we, uh, prepay annual property insurance, which is about fifty percent of that department's total budget. Uh, manager's office has consumed fifty-nine percent of their budget, uh, related to personnel, uh, changes and issues. We expect that to even out, uh, as the year goes on, and I would be happy to answer any questions about the mid-year financial report.
Alright, I want to entertain a motion to approve the 2015 mid-year financial report.
I'll make a motion to approve the 2015 mid-year financial report.
Do you have a second?
I'll second.
Move by Mayor Protem Lamont, seconded by Councilmember Perro, any discussion?
I have a, I have a question, um, and the reason that I've wanted a, a lot of the data is because I just, I wanted a, a more of a feel for the budget going into the bud- the next budget cycle, and so, I, while I understand that most, a- and just about every line item is way below, you know, or right in line with, um, their expectation, but, but I noticed that, like, safety equipment parks and recreation postage and EMS hazmat disposal, those are way above. They've already blown through their, what they budgeted, and do you, I know, do you look at it as a department, or do you, do you look at those specific things and say, "Okay, what's, what's happening here, and how do we correct that?"
Well, the, the level of budgetary control is at the department level, so, you know, if, if they, if they spend more in one line item and
So it just.
And spend less in, in another line item, that's perfectly fine, as long as their, their department budget doesn't go over.
But to address your question, what we do is when, um, I sit down with the department head, and Stephen and our budget team, uh, Jay-Z's part of that as well, is that, you know, I, we, we do ask those questions, we, it's not just at a departmental level, it's.
Right.
Okay, if, if office supplies, if you've spent thirteen hundred dollars and it's now two thousand dollars, what's going on?
Right.
Um, you know, maybe it was, we said, "Hey, you know what, we had two chairs that blew out, and you've gotta buy a chair," and so that is what caused that to go over, or there may be some, you know, circumstance, or, you know, and sometimes it's, sometimes you've under-budgeted. So why are you under-budgeting? What, what's going on there that you actually have been spending fifteen hundred this year, sixteen hundred this year? You know, is that the appropriate number, up or down? And so we actually have those literally line-by-line discussions with each department head about what is going on, so that, and, and you know, you never can predict what may happen throughout the year, so uh, duh, uh, you know, we give some discretion to those department heads to say, "Hey, let's, um, you know, they need to buy some additional small equipment." Well, okay, find it within your budget, and they're gonna say, "Okay, you know what, I'm not gonna spend as much over on this line item, because I know I'm gonna have to pick it up here," and so that, those are those types of discussions and, and latitude that we have, but generally, we talk about those internally.
We do go line by line during the budget process.
Yeah.
But during the fiscal year, we, we look at it and say, "Oh, you've spent a thousand more in this, well, you're gonna give me a thousand from somewhere else."
Yeah, 'cause the only reason I, I, and I kinda look at it probably closer than most, is, is because when, when we agreed to do the, um, the garden, for example, that was taken out of Harmony Park budget, and so I'm thinking to myself, "Well, how do we have that much money where we can just take that out of Harmony?" And what, is there something suffering as a result of taking, you know, using that on the garden process? So that's why I probably look at it a little more clo- closer than most.
Still upset about that garden, huh?
Well.
No, I just.
And for that, I, I, you know, I, I, you know, ki- ju- just kinda getting back into the swing of things, and that's an item that I'm not aware of, of, you know, the full cost, so if there is an additional cost, it may be included in a future budget amendment.
Alright, so we have a motion to approve the, uh, staff report for fiscal year fifteen mid-year. Any other discussion? Hearing none, call for the vote. All those in favor, show your hands. All opposed, same sign, it is unanimous, it does carry, no opposed. Item, uh, fifteen, consider and take appropriate action regarding Verizon cellular infrastructure and a potential lease between the town and Verizon. Uh, you have a report, uh, Council about that. Uh, Stephen, did, you wanna make any comments, or anybody have any questions?
Uh, tonight, staff's looking for direction from the town council regarding whether or not the council would like to pursue one or both of the lease opportunities. Uh, give us some direction there. If it's not, then we'll call Verizon and say, "Thanks, but no thanks." If it's others, then we'll begin pursuing, uh, what those options might look like, and bring that back to you in a more formal, uh, lease agreement.
Chair would recognize Philip Schaffner.
Is, do, you know, um, right.
Make a motion.
From my desk, I can see in the middle of this guy's pasture, he, just all of a sudden, in the last year, a pole came up, a huge pole. And is there anywhere that we can, can actually see this in a sports facility or in a housing area that? Cause I don't, I'm, I, I see the drawing, but I'm not really, I don't.
What's the scale?
I don't know how it would fit, or what it would look like.
Yeah, one of the things that I've at, that I've asked Verizon to be prepared for, if, if the town would want to pursue this, is to be able to, to, to create some mock drawings, you know, everything from what does the stone wall look like, how does it look? Where the sightlines, those types of things. I haven't asked them to incur the expense of doing that, because that, it's costly on their side if we're not interested.
Cause I, I think that most of us are familiar with the flagpole at, at the golf course that has, basically is a cell tower, and, but nobody knows it, you know, because it's incognito, and so, um, that was, that was one thing, and if you can indulge me, one other thing. Can, can we not come, can we not talk to the meth, or the, uh, Mormon church about coming right down their path and going over? Cause I, I went and drove that, and right where, you can see where they mow, and it goes right to that and right over. Which seems, I mean, if they're not gonna use that.
Cell tower?
For access. Yeah, we, we might be able to do, I, I can tell you from a, from a time perspective, often working with, with that, with that particular church, just because of, of the way they're set up. Um, couldn't take some time, and that's not an, that's not an issue on my end, it may be an issue for Verizon, but it's, i- if that, if, and I know there's some grade change there, and I'm trying to think off the top of my head if it will work.
Kinda goes down.
And where their property line is, and where the other property owner there. Um, you know, ideally, that would be the best location to get a utility easement, and they haven't been.
Oh, yeah, that's, yeah, and then the other, the other item is, is instead of building an actual, if, obviously, coming from the Mormons would be the best, but if we, if you built a road, I know at one time the mud was, was looking at this type of road where grass grows, where they can actually drive on it, but grass grows and it's not as noticeable.
Yeah, I, I think that that, uh, you know, I think that's probably one of my biggest concerns regarding the park lease is having an eight-foot path of six-inch concrete going through it. I, I don't think it, it's more of an aesthetic and a feel than probably a practical issue in terms of working with the sports associations and having children, uh, play, but, you know, I just know that we spend a lot of money, we spend a lot of money keeping that to be a premier location, and I just wanna make sure that it's the right thing, and has the right look, the aesthetics. I mean, it, it is revenue per year, but, you know, I, I would want the council to weigh that, you know, have a balanced approach, and if we could look for options like that, then that would, I would be all over that.
Alright, Councilmember Reed.
I motion, we do not approve. If I get a second, I'll explain why.
Second.
Alright, we have a motion to not approve, and a second.
Both.
And are you talking about both locations?
I'm sorry, I should clarify. Motion not to approve the one that's in the, uh, by the baseball fields.
Alright, second, is that fine with you?
Yes.
Alright, a motion to not approve the tower in the baseball fields, and a second by Councilmember Perro, any discussion? I'm gonna speak in favor of that. I don't think that's the best location for that. Um, and I know that citizens, at least the citizens I've heard from, have concerns about that. I recognize the revenue and the need to the, have the cell communication, but, um, not my best choice, and therefore, I'm not against it. I'm not in favor of it. Anybody else?
No, I would agree. My life experiences, to me, just don't allow me to vote for something like that.
Do, I, I'd be interested to know more about what it's really gonna look like, because ultimately, this is an aesthetic question. Um, I would also like to know the impact on the service of people that use Verizon here, because we all know that there are some, depending on who you use as a carrier here, there's some serious dead spots in town. And I would think we would be remiss and not do the due diligence there just to make sure, because I think my personal opinion is when the, that you're gonna have some people that are gonna be upset about it aesthetically, no matter what, if it's close to them. Uh, but they may not be aware of where other, where other towers are in town, and how their camouflage and things of that nature. When this was first brought to council back in, like, uh, October or something like that, that was one of the things we mentioned, is, you know, if we do kick the tires on this thing, we should put something out that residents can look at to say, "Oh, by the way, did you know there's a tower here? Did you know there was one over by Tom Thumb for eight years?" and, and on and on, just so that there's a, a, a full amount of, uh, of, uh, information out there. Uh, so, I, I support moving forward with both in due diligence at this point, so I will not support the motion, just to.
I would report that, um, based on what I saw on Facebook post, there were over twenty unique individuals that commented about there were over twenty unique individuals that commented about Verizon cell reception. So that's specifically what they said, they had Verizon. And I'm going to say it was pretty well split between I don't have any problem to I can't get a signal unless I turn right on this corner of my house kind of comment. So I think it's very mixed. Um, I'm not sure they can give you those statistics. They can maybe give you dropped calls, but I don't know that they know lost strength, signal strength. Now, I will tell you this, because I've done some research in this area. Just because there's a tower there does not mean that you're going to have improved reception.
There's an umbrella effect where it doesn't
Well, not only umbrella, but there is a capacity. So what happens in, in high use, uh, it throws people off to another tower that it thinks it can let go to another tower so that it can serve more clients. So, uh, just because you put one there doesn't mean it's going to affect. I have terrible Verizon reception in my house. And when they added the country club, I thought, oh, great, that's going to help me. Not one bit. And I think it has a lot to do with topography and trees and that kind of thing. So I speak in favor of not allowing it and I don't need any more knowledge, so about it.
Just a question in general, how tall is the pole at the country club and the old flagpole? Because this is a hundred and, or a hundred and five feet tall, it seemed like.
I don't, off the top of my head, I don't know that, that answer, but we can go
Taller than the country club.
I have a question about the, the staff I have a, I have a question about the staff report. So the staff report says that if we don't allow it, that potentially they could go to Byron Nelson or, or to Northwest ISD and ask them, but that would come before us. So do we have any, if it does come before us, do we have the authority to say no to that as well? Without ramifications?
Yeah, I don't think I said that in this staff report. There may have been one previously.
I thought it said in there.
I know that that has been discussed.
Mike said that to us.
Yeah, I, I think Mr. Sly had said that. And I know that when Verizon is looking at their engineering studies, they are looking for triangulated spots. And one is in that region. Better is where Independence East is, less good, worse, get my grammar right.
For sure.
Is Byron Nelson High School and replacing one of their light poles on the baseball, or on the football facility there or on the baseball field there with a similar type of stealth antenna. That is not currently a use, I don't believe, in their PD. And if it did, it probably would violate the height restrictions of that. And so that would have to come back as an approved use. So, yeah, you do have some control there.
All right.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Jim.
Another point just that we can't really ignore is there are numerous experts in the field of microwave transmissions and cell towers and so on, who have said that as these towers go up, so does the strength of the signals. And as the strength of those signals go up, there's potential for human health risk. And there's debate as to whether there is or whether there isn't. And since that debate exists, the other factor I would consider in, in not approving this is the fact that we don't want to expose our residents to an increased risk, if in fact it does exist. So I'd rather err on the side of caution.
All right, so we have a motion and a second on the floor to instruct the town manager to, uh, inform the Verizon people about the tower that we do not want to consider, uh, a tower for the park area.
And for that matter, I can let them know that we're not inclined to consider other locations in town owned by different entities, whether it's private or a public institution.
I wouldn't agree to that.
Okay.
That wasn't the motion, but the motion was specific. All right, all in favor of the motion, show your hands. Uh, all opposed, same sign. Uh, all right, Rod and Roe voted against, the motion does carry. All right, uh, that dealt with just the one location. Uh, would anyone like to make a motion to, uh, instruct the town manager to proceed with allowing a cell tower along the Encore right away on one of the towers? Is that right, Stephen?
Yes, sir.
I will move to instruct the town manager to move forward with allowing the tower near the former site of Beck Park.
I'll second that.
Oh, wait, okay. That wasn't what I asked.
Oh, that's, that's the, that's the site, right?
Yeah, it's, it's right over there by the Plaza area, just east of the creek.
By the creek bed, yeah.
But in the Encore area?
Yes, sir, it's it.
Okay.
It's within the Encore easement they would build into the berm.
Right, okay. Okay, all right. All right, the motion made by Roe, seconded by Reed to, uh, instruct the town manager to move forward with negotiations on a cell tower along 114, close to the Plaza Shopping Center and Beck Park. Is that clear?
Just, just to, is it a separate tower or is that like we currently have where there's antennas on top of the power pole?
Actually Encore has already constructed a taller tower there. You probably can't see it just because your depth perception can't recognize, but it's a little bit taller.
On the pole.
Uh, Encore did, they built their transmission tower a little bit taller so that antennas can be fit on top of it.
So I think the intent is it's going to be on top of a, an existing
Yes, sir.
You'll see, you'll, you'll notice on there the flat items that go around the tops.
All right. Any other discussion? Hearing none, we'll call for the vote. All those in favor, show your hands. All opposed, same sign, it is unanimous. Uh, while we're on the subject, um, I would make a motion that we instruct the town manager to discuss with Verizon and continue the investigation with Northwest ISD to secure the triangular piece of land along Bobcat Boulevard and Marshall Creek Road, uh, which we talked about for monumentation and potential site for a cell tower. If you get a second, I'll talk about it.
I'll second that.
All right, so we have a motion to instruct the town manager, just as I said, to, to continue to investigate with Northwest ISD to buy that piece of property. Stephen, you had told me that it looked like it was on the disposal list for ten dollars. Did you ever find out about that?
Due to Mr. McQuarrie's health, that's caused some, um, timing issues. However, I've talked to, we're in discussions with Moran about moving forward. You know, they want to do some renovations to Medlin's gym. They still owe us a Medlin site plan, uh, an updated Medlin site plan. In addition, they owe us tree mitigation funds for Medlin's expansion back in two thousand eight or two thousand nine. And part of those discussions have included that, that triangular piece of property that we've been waiting for the school board to recognize as surplus property because that area is actually part of PD twenty-eight, which is the high school. Bobcat Boulevard cut the road through that property. And so it bisected it, and so there's really no use from a school district perspective. And we've talked about having an, an exchange of tree mitigation because they have no room on their Medlin site that we do some type of, in lieu of, monumentation type deal.
All right, so do you know where that is now? Here it
Well, I know where it is, I'm not I didn't know how we got to this discussion. I must have missed the beginning of the motion.
Uh, oh, it's because it's cell tower related. I'm instructing him to talk to Verizon about potentially putting the tower there. But we don't own the land at this point.
Would you be talking about a stealth tower similar to what was at Trophy Lake in 114?
Okay, so
I didn't specify.
So the motion is to put a, to buy the land to, for the purpose of putting a cell tower on that triangle next to Medlin?
That's one of the purposes. We had already talked about buying the land for monumentation.
Okay.
That's the primary.
That's the primary function, but
I'm all right with the monumentation. I don't like the cell tower idea.
Okay, that comes up.
It'll come back to us if it does. So I'm just saying, deal with it. Okay, all right, I understand. So we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All right, all those in favor of the motion, show your hands. Uh, Lamont, Sanders, Perro and Roe, or Far
Monument.
Pardon?
You negotiate that later on.
No, the motion included both. So when you're voting, you're voting, instructing the town manager to consider those and continue looking at the land and talk, mention to them that it's the potential to have a cell tower there. You're telling them, no, they can't have it on the park. So as opposed to maybe them going to the school district, this is an option. I just don't want to lose the revenue.
If cell towers included in the motion, I'll vote no.
All right, all those in favor of the motion, again, show your hands. All right, Lamont, Roe, Sanders, Far, all opposed, same sign? All right, Perro, Reed, Schaffner and Kurtz vote far, motion fails. All right, uh, I think we have dealt with that item. Item sixteen, uh, town council liaison updates, discussion of same park, parking recs board, April twentieth, twenty fifteen. Councilmember Schaffner.
If you haven't listened to, listened to that audio, you may want to.
What happened?
Um, basically this discussion was, uh, I think there was only one item. And that had, that dealt with the, uh, Trophy Club Park, um, concept plan, updating the concept plan. And so what, what happened is the, the subcommittee, the, the Trophy Club Park Subcommittee met and had one meeting and they took the, the old concept plan, which I think was done
Probably five or six years ago now.
Yeah. And they slapped two thousand fifteen on it and brought it forth. Well, the majority of the night was spent on talking about a RV park at the end of, uh, TW King. And they had a lot more people in the audience than we do right now that were against it. And, um, and so, um, they, they tried to, um, assure those people that this is just a concept plan, this is just the early stages. Uh, but there were a lot of concerned people, uh, at that meeting. So they, they, I think they've taken that under advisement and they are having additional meetings with dealing with the concept plan, uh, for Trophy Club Park. But the majority of the night was spent just dealing with that.
I have a
Question?
Question for you. Um, did you, and the reason I'll ask this is because I, prior to like two days before the meeting or a day before the meeting, I guess some talk started circulating because I had a neighbor who didn't even know I was on council till like three weeks ago, asked me or something about it. And then my wife said, what's going on? That's red flag number one.
She didn't know you were on council?
Yeah. She's like, she thought I was just going out and drinking beer and watching the Rangers every Tuesday, every other Tuesday. No, um, and so I went and then looked for myself to try and figure out what, you know, looked at the agenda packet and everything. Did you, did you feel that, that what, what the intent of the meeting was, was adequately communicated in the, in what was presented? Because I, with all the context that I have, had a difficult time with it. So did, what was your sense of how the message was delivered?
I, I was actually surprised that it was brought forward to the, to the park board so early because they, they've only had one, one meeting. Um, I, I'm not sure that it was you know, it's, it's, it's difficult to say, was it adequately described? Because I understand what they're doing, you know, and to me, it's a concept plan. And it's, it's so early, I mean, it's been there from the beginning. You know, it's, it's been in the document, but I think that what happened is people saw two thousand fifteen, they saw this coming before board, and so they just assumed that decisions were going to be made right then.
Yeah, my concern was that it was vague in the sense that it made something that was relatively old look very new without clarity between the two. And in matters such as this, vagueness is like our number one enemy.
Yeah, and I, I think that Adam realizes that in hindsight, you know. Um, and, and I think that one thing that didn't help in, in that particular meeting is, is one, the chair was not there and two, the vice chair was not there. And so Adam had to, to run the meeting. So that's, that's probably one thing that, that we need to, or
We've addressed it.
That Stephen needs to, you know, um, because decorum was not, uh, the, the friend that night. And so that, that didn't help. But, uh, but I, you know, again, I, I think that residents and, and non-residents, because there were a lot of non-residents, need to understand that, that this is, all, all that was, was basically letting the board know where the subcommittee was at. It's, it's just the early stages of a concept plan, which, uh, periodically should be, should be addressed and should be looked at. And, um, I just don't, perhaps in hindsight, it was just too early to bring it forward. But, uh, but again, it, it's, it's, this is so, so far, you know, from coming to us. But I, I just, you know, hopefully residents will understand that and hopefully, you know, we can communicate that. I think Adam had talked about April doing some kind of, uh, education on that, that end.
Councilmember Lamont.
I was at the meeting and I guess I got a question for Stephen is how did it get on the agenda? I mean, like CFAB, they really don't put anything on unless it's us. I, I can't speak to EDC, but I'm, I'm pretty sure they run it by you before they put it on. This just went on the agenda. I mean, it, it's, it's a firestorm. You mentioned the word RV, I mean, it's like red flags go up, and this is from two thousand
Park Board pretty well controls their own agenda.
But see, but, but I disagree with you on that because at CFAB, the, the time that I went to CFAB, all the subcommittees reported. And so this is, this should be no different. The subcommittee reported at where they were at. So I, I don't, I don't have a problem.
That's not the way it came across. They said because CFAB tasked them or asked them to look at additional revenue. That's what I, I
Oh, you mean how it even came?
How it came on the park.
Well, they have a, because they have a standing Trophy Club Park Subcommittee.
They're looking at ways, how do you enhance the park? How do you enhance the revenue of the park, the viability of the park? That's how the discussion came up. I would probably state that the park concept plan probably should be updated because there's been some things that the corps has said that you can't do any longer. And I think ball field, they're, they're pretty restrictive about ball fields now. Well, ball fields are included in there and you can't do them to the extent that we've got them shown. And I think at the time, uh, it was, let's go to the corps and ask for anything possible and we'll put it down as, and get it approved. And then what's realistically going to happen? I can tell you that South Lake is not real happy about it either because, and, and they haven't been
They, they control the access.
They have not happened, they haven't been happy since the day that that concept plan was done. I think it was done in like two thousand nine or ten, but, or two thousand, I mean, it's been, it's been a while. And I heard about it then. And I have pretty good contacts and friends within the South Lake administration and I hear about those things.
And, and to that point, um, there's a access point right behind Councilman Roe's house that doesn't exist. You would have to go through two people's living rooms to get, to get to that. And so that's one reason
I did let Philip know that before the meeting.
And that's, and that's one reason that, that they really should look at this concept.
But the, the, where the disconnect occurred is you're looking at a picture and then it says twenty fifteen beside it. And I know that, that, that those lots are going to be sold or I know those ball fields aren't allowed anymore. But so I think that's where people, you just run a little risk of people getting real stirred up for
All right, thank you, Philip, for your report.
You're welcome.
I'll move us forward. Item seventeen, town manager Sedell's update regarding the following, uh, council discussion and providing input regarding same dog park survey, back to nature day, spring family campout and assistant town manager CFO duties. And just to point out, uh, Holly, that item council is misspelled if you haven't noticed it. Seventeen? Countle.
Ooh, Schaffner, Schaffner didn't pick it up.
Okay, Stephen.
Um, the dog park survey, it's currently online on trophyclub.org. It's a short survey, I think it's eleven questions. It, it wants to gauge people, how they use the park, what are their thoughts? How do they feel about the maintenance, the care? It's very quick. We would love the input. We're, we have not only have it online, but we're going to have some folks outside to be able to, or out, out at the park on this Saturday. Or is that correct? Do you know?
Sure.
I think it's this Saturday, I have to, about, uh, asking folks to do the, do the survey there. The back to The Back to Nature event was this past weekend. On Saturday, we had three hundred and fifteen folks attend. Two hundred and sixty-five of those were residents. The rest were non-residents. We had everything from dinosaur displays and birds and all sorts of things. We had like seventeen tents and vendors there available. Everything I've heard has been really positive. It continues to be a really strong program that we do in the spring and the fall. I'm really proud of our staff for, for pulling that together. And then regarding...
Councilman Lamont and I, we went and we were asked if we were residents.
The gate guy.
The assistant town manager CFO duties, I think I've told council, but just for, make sure everything that you know. Number one, I'm so glad to have Steven Glickman back on staff. He's a big part of our success and I think a big part of what our future will be. He is responsible for not just the finance department and those activities, but he oversees court. He oversees parks and recreation. He oversees information technology, human resources, and... Did I cover them all? That's it. So he's got finance plus those departments. And, you know, one of the things that I look at in order to make him a better assistant town manager is being able to maybe shuffle departments at times so that he gets experience managing different things. That makes him more well-rounded, makes him a better employee, makes him a better assistant to, to me. That won't happen for a while, but I will want to transition and keep, and keep things kind of fresh and different ideas coming and going. So, I'm great to have him back. He's already made an impact. It's been a quick month since he's been here.
Is that it? Thank you, Steven. Alright, next item is items for future agenda to include discussion of agenda items for consideration on the upcoming regular session council agenda for May the twelfth, meeting and discussion of future agenda items. Council, I combined two items and eliminated one of our items that we had been discussing because nobody was discussing it at the early part of the meeting, and just thought I would combine these two at the end, future agenda, and look at what's on next council agenda. So that's the purpose of this. I had two items that I wanted to add to future agenda. One of them is discussion and action related to town garage sales, special sales, like estate, moving, et cetera. And the second one is review of ordinance allowing golf carts but not including special vehicles. Those are the two items that...
Is that on next council agenda or that's for future agenda?
For future. I wasn't saying it had to be done by the next time. And I, I didn't look at future, is it there?
Should we be looking at this first and then get into the future?
Well, I'm sorry, I just, either way, I've already said it at this point. It's a little late.
And I got a couple of things. The A, signage, I've noticed a lot of signage popping up in the slip roads lately. Is this what you're referring to or just, just in general, bringing this up?
You're looking at the, you're looking at the agenda for next meeting?
Signage and median.
This signage was directional, right? What you're talking about here?
That's, that's different.
Yeah.
That signage is directional.
Okay.
In other words, we have, maybe one place is all we have left that's a monument sign that points directional to neighborhoods. I'm just thinking that signage that maybe somehow indicates if you're going down Trophy Club Drive close to Bobcat, that you know to turn left to go to the high school or the middle school. And you continue straight to go to Trophy Club Park.
Okay, so my thing will be on the future agenda, rather than, it wouldn't apply to this.
That's right. That item's been there on future agenda for a while. So it's coming back probably because it's time for it to come up, right? And I don't know that we have any plans. It also was dealing with where I think I brought up to council a picture of some signage in South Lake that not only is directional but informational, that you could actually advertise like events on that aren't a marquee sign, but nevertheless, a large poster that you could have advertised. So, you know, think of tourism, you go into town, you come in Trophy Club Drive, which way is the country club? Or you come to Trophy Lake Drive, which way is the country club? Which way is Harmony Park?
Yeah, my mistake, I...
Which way is Independence Park? That was the kind of thing.
And that's what, we touched on, we touched on that with our, with the presentation last week regarding kind of bonding ability and what you can do, you know, monumentation, signage, those types of things could be, could be used for that.
Alright, so two more things. B, at first I thought was a good idea, but based upon the park board and with the concept plan and RVs, I just don't think at this time that's a good idea. Just, just my opinion. Creating a committee. B, consider and take appropriate action regarding forming a committee of residents to create a site slash action plan for Trophy Club Park.
I was going to ask to have that removed.
Oh, okay, you're ahead of me. Cool. And one other thing...
So any objection to eliminating that item?
We could do it here?
Alright, so Steven will take that as direction.
Yes, we can take B off of meeting date five twelve, which is that workshop session.
Yeah, take it up workshop, then number seven on the future.
Right. I think that's going to come before us eventually anyway.
And then on the baseball association, can we get something in writing from Roanoke that they will allow fields to be used and how many times a week? And how many, if, if they have any issue with the restriction of how many players can play? I mean, we have nothing from them.
Alright, that's, you're debating the issue as opposed to saying you want it there or not?
We can do...
It's been heard.
Okay.
Just, we can't debate it. Okay. You hear that, Steven?
Yes, sir.
No offense, no offense to Roland and Tim, but do we, can't, can't Holly just administer the oath offline?
I was going to say the exact same thing.
Do we really need to go through that whole process?
Whatever the easiest thing is there.
Yeah.
I'm in favor of whatever the easiest thing is there.
And really, we, we put that on there because it's more of a ceremonial opportunity for the council. It's obviously, it's y'all's discretion how you would like to do that. We can coordinate with Judge Chambers. But we wanted to make sure that you have the opportunity like every other council member has had the opportunity over the years.
I think we should get a big portrait for saving the town. It's five grand, right? The election, don't we get a?
Big portrait?
Put it right over there.
I thought that was thirteen grand.
I will defer to staff, whatever is easier for you guys to coordinate. If it's actually easier to coordinate it in the meeting, let's do it here. If it's easier to do it outside, let's do it there.
I would suggest you guys do it publicly so people see you sworn in and they understand what happened.
I would agree with that. I would agree with that.
Don't expect any remarks.
Y'all don't want me to get this floor, do you?
Alright, anything else on next council meeting's agenda or future agenda that you want to deal with?
I have two things.
Okay, Garrett and then Jim, Perrow.
I would like to discuss and possibly take action on changing the speed limit in the roundabout to twenty miles an hour. It's thirty miles an hour currently.
Is it legal for us to do that?
I don't know if you can do that.
Well, let's have a discussion about it. I think we need to do that. Yeah. And the other thing, and I don't know how we address this. I think, there's no action, but I'd like an update publicly about what's going on with the Hampton Inn. I mean, the Holiday Inn. I think, I think we need to talk where the citizens can see, and if we can get the general contractor in here, the owner in here. It's, I have, I have concerns. I won't be...
They doing any work on it?
Would it be sufficient that the town manager's put it in his report and get the info and give it to us? Or do you want actually someone to come in?
We met, we met with the owner today.
Oh, you did?
Yes, sir.
Can we broadcast it? So I've gotten a ton of email and just people talking to me. And so it's not as much, it's for me as well, but I would really want to be able to broadcast it out there and let the people that are concerned about it have an answer, so.
So you want it?
As long as it's broadcasted out there somehow, I don't, I think we just need to update the citizens on what's going on.
There's an opportunity that, that, that they may come in with some site plan changes, at least request. And so that may happen anyway, by default. But we need to get, we had a meeting with them today and we've kind of told them where they stand in terms of being able to do some things and not do some things, and what the process is. And I think they're thinking that over. So it may happen anyway. I will, I'll keep you updated on that.
Garrett, part of your concern deals with slow progress?
Yes.
Okay, alright. So I don't know that that'll...
I have a whole different set of concerns than the emails that have come in. The emails that have come in are slow progress, but I...
Alright, so he's requested that be put on future agenda list unless Steven, you have another way to get that to us. But Holly, add that to your list for right now so that they just go on and come off fairly quickly.
Do we, do we typically go into executive session for the mayor pro temp? I, I don't remember doing that last year.
You, we can go into executive session to have discussion, but you have to come out and vote if you're going to do it.
I mean, I like to...
You don't have to.
The discipline and dismissal.
Yeah, last year we did it all in the open.
You don't, you don't have to. It's just typically you have, it has to be agendaed as an option if you want to do it.
We'll holler at on the discipline.
I think you have more point out of what I did.
Anybody else have a future agenda? Jim, did you have something?
I, Phillip just raised a point about the mayor pro temp being in executive session, so...
I have something and it's far and away the, the most fluffy thing I've ever suggested, but I, I, I think it needs to be formalized in some fashion. After the discussion we had last week with the baseball guys and, and talking about field usages and things of that nature, I think we need to, as a body, appoint some kind of ad hoc committee, if that's the proper method, to represent the kickball players, just the two or three people. I mean, it's the most fluffy thing in the world, but just something where we could grab someone from Parks Board and someone who's a, a, a team captain or something, you know, just something so that the interface between people who are participating, it's not all falling on Sherri or Adam to try and, you know what I'm saying? I don't know how to best go about that, but I think it would be wise since we need to have some people that could work with baseball to, to work things out as opposed to burden staff.
Yeah, and, you know, just because we, we happen to be involved in kickball, I think a lot of the decisions are falling on Sherri to make when you have, you know, three hundred people involved that want some decision on the rules, you know, so.
I'd like to see Park Board somehow do something next.
So you recommended for a future agenda item to have some discussion about the town involvement in kickball organization and scheduling.
Yeah, just a, a way to, a way to establish a, a, a body to help represent the participants or something like that.
Okay, specifically related to the organization of some group or body to deal with that issue.
Maybe we can throw bocce ball on there too, so.
You might want to do it, make it adult altogether, I don't know.
Well, the, us bocce bowlers don't use the baseball field, so we're not going to get involved there.
Alright, I'm going to move on. I want to ask a question, but I won't. Alright, any other items for the agenda? Alright. Hearing none, in a moment, I'm going to take us into executive session. Item nineteen, pursuant to the following designated sections of the Texas Government Code, annotated chapter five five one, Texas Government Meeting Act. The council will convene into executive session to discuss the following. A, section five fifty-one, point oh seven four A one, personnel matter to discuss or deliberate the appointment, employment, evaluation, resignation, duties, discipline, or dismissal of a public officer employee. Town Attorney Patricia Adams, that is her annual review. And B, section five fifty-one, point oh seven two, deliberations about real property to deliberate, to deliberate the purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real property with deliberation in an open meeting would have a detrimental effect on the position of the governmental body in the negotiations of a, with a third person, potential sites for the location of a new police town hall, facility, annex building, and potential lease of property. It is ten thirty and we are in executive session. Counsel, if you want to take a few minute recess, you can. It is twelve seventeen AM. We are back from being in executive session. We will now consider item number twenty, consider and take appropriate action regarding executive session. The chair recognizes Roland Rowe for a motion.
I would like to make a motion to authorize Steven Sidell to execute all necessary documents in relation to the land purchase for municipal facilities.
I'll second that.
Alright. So we have a motion by Roland Rowe, a second by Greg Lamont, authorizing Steven Sidell to execute all documents necessary for the land purchase for the future town hall and police facility. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, show your hands. All opposed, same sign. It is unanimous. Now the chair would recognize Greg Lamont for a motion.
I would like to make a motion to give the town attorney a three percent merit increase effective immediately.
Alright, so I have a motion by Greg Lamont. Do you have a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Roland Rowe. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll call for the vote. All those in favor, show your hands. All opposed, same sign. No oppose, it is unanimous. I would, chair would recognize Tim Kurtz for a motion to adjourn. I'd like to make a motion to adjourn. You have a second? Second by Roland Rowe. All in favor, show your hands. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries.